All right then. I would like to bring this special meeting of the Temecula City Council to order. Let me see if I have, yeah. Well, I have a script, believe it or not. Okay, so Madam City Clerk, could we call the roll, please?
Sure. Councilmember Camachero?
Here.
Councilmember Nigar?
Here.
Councilmember Ron?
Here.
Councilmember Stewart?
Here.
Mayor Edwards?
Here. And could we do a real quick flag salute? Mayor Frotem, would you like to do a flag salute for us?
All right, join me in saluting our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Do you, councilmembers, do you have minutes? Do you have agendas?
No.
We need agendas, actually. We have lots of other things.
I have one.
Okay. Thank you.
I don't know.
I'll share mine with Councilmember Camachero.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you. I know he's done his homework. He has it memorized.
Thank you.
All right. So, do we have any public comments?
Madam Mayor, we do not have any public comments on non-agendised items.
No public comments? All right then, so we'll move on to item number one. Item number one on the special meeting agenda is the consent calendar, and we do have one item on the consent calendar. Award a construction contract to Lecos Electric, Inc. for the Butterfield Stage Road at La Serena Way, traffic signal installation, PW15-11TS. And Mr. City Manager, I believe you're taking it away.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. I have a legal statement on behalf of Peter Thorson. I just need to read into the record. Councilmembers Camachero and Nigar will abstain on this item due to a conflict of interest. On January 24, 2017, the council approved the plans and specifications for this project, and neither participated in this approval. At that time, the nature of their conflict was described in the staff report. Europa Vineyard Estates is located on approximately 290 acres, southeasterly of Butterfield Stage Road and La Serena Way, in the unincorporated area of Riverside County. Europa Vineyard Estates has been owned by Temecula Vineyard Estates, LLC. Europa Vineyard Estates is now owned by an entity related to Temecula Vineyard Estates, LLC, Sura Vineyard Development Corporation. Councilmember Camachero is the president of Sura Vineyard and Development Corporation. Councilmembers Camachero and Nigar do not have any direct investments or ownership interests in the Europa Vineyard Estates project, Temecula Vineyard Estates, LLC, or Sura Vineyard and Development Corporation. The managing member of Temecula Vineyard Estates, LLC, has been Mr. Daniel Stevenson. Councilmembers Camachero and Nigar, however, each have ownership interests and are members of other limited liability companies that are developing property outside of the city of Temecula and in which Mr. Stevenson is also the managing member. The Europa Vineyard Estates project, Temecula Vineyard Estates, LLC, and Sura Development Corporation are therefore otherwise-related business entities for Councilmembers Camachero and Nigar within the meaning of Section 18700.2 of the FPPC regulations. This matter is on the business calendar, and under the FPPC rules, Councilmembers Nigar and Camachero are not required to leave the dais unless the matter is pulled by a council member for discussion.
All right, thank you very much. So, in that case, could we have a staff report, please?
Yes, good morning, Madam Mayor and councilmembers.
Good morning.
The item before you is to award a construction contract for a traffic signal at the intersection of Butterfield Stage Road and La Serena Way. This project was originally part of the Butterfield Road Extension Project, the third phase of that project, and due to some design issues in the street improvements portion of the project, the traffic signal at the intersection was broken out and bid as a separate and standalone project. Lecos Electric was the lowest responsible bidder, and staff is recommending that the council award the contract to Lecos Electric for the traffic signal at this intersection. And that concludes the staff report.
All right. Are there any questions of staff? No? And we had no public comments?
There are no public comments on this item.
Right? Okay, so no more questions?
Move approval.
Any discussion? Then I'll accept a motion for approval or disapproval.
Move approval.
Okay. I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? And let's show-
Abstain.
Two abstentions and three ayes. Thank you very much, gentlemen. And now we can move on to our budget workshop. Review fiscal years 2018-22 Capital Improvement Program, CIP, and fiscal year 2017-18, CIP, and annual operating budgets for the city of Temecula, the Temecula Community Services District, and the successor agency to the Redevelopment Agency. Okay, this is going to involve the whole family.
Yep. Good morning, Madam Mayor, again, members of the council, members of the community. I am not sure how many cities can say they have balanced their budget out five years, yet today, this is the case for the city of Temecula. This morning, we will share how we intend to invest for today, tomorrow, and the future to maintain the highest quality of life for this community. Given there are multiple pieces to our budgets, funding sources that in some cases touch three different budgets, I would like to suggest that we provide the city council the full presentation and come back for individual questions and discussion. If this is acceptable, I think it will allow the broader and much bigger financial picture to be presented and digested. Last year at this time, I shared that while we had balanced the budget and several areas of revenue were improving, we remained very concerned about the long-term fiscal health of our city. Further, many of the projects, services, and programs that you will see today were truly at risk. The primary driver of this concern was our ability to keep pace with the rising cost for public safety, as well as investing properly in the maintenance of our community and quality of life. This message has been one you have heard from me, actually, since 2014-15. The benefits of five-year budget forecasting and modeling are numerous. In our specific case, we were able to continually track this growing concern, evaluate our business options, and make the necessary course corrections. The agenda for today will include a brief look back at the last 12 months, Measure S, an overview of the five-year CIP, introduction of our draft operating budget for fiscal year 1718, the TCSD operating budget, as well as a discussion on five-year strategic planning. November 8, 2016, the voters of our community approved Measure S, a one-cent sales tax to address these shortcomings, and in some cases, providing much higher levels of service, especially in the arena of public safety. January 10, 2017, this city council amended our sheriff's contract with Riverside County, and we added 11 new sworn officers to our staffing ratio, 10 of which would be funded by the anticipated new revenue. This was a commitment made throughout our discussions regarding Measure S. These officers were officially onboarded by mid-April. February 28, 2017, we presented our mid-year budget, and city council adopted fiscal guidelines that included public safety, desired staffing levels, asset management, programs, capital improvements, and general services. The council also programmed the anticipated revenue that we would receive between April 1 and June 30. As a reminder, the collection of this new revenue did not begin until April 1, and we won't completely be able to verify what a full year of Measure S will generate until September of 2018. As such, we have taken a conservative approach in our programming these next 12 months. At the mid-year, this city council not only made the commitment to enhancing public safety, but the decision to address many areas of deferred maintenance was also made. Investments of Measure S were made in roads, residential slurry seal citywide, parks, facilities including the Ronald H. Roberts Temecula Public Library, the Patricia H. Birdsong Sports Complex, as well as park and public restroom facilities. Before we launch into the budget workshop slides, I wanted to share some current demographic information for the city, which does play a significant role in our local economy and our budget. As recently published from Nielsen reports and the Southwest Riverside County Board of Realty, the following demographics have been provided. You can see our current population is just over 111,000. This is up 1.8 percent from last year. The median age in years in Temecula is 34.9. Number of households is approaching 35,000, and this is up 1.2 percent from 2016. The average household income is 97,500. This is up 3.6 percent from last year. And in April, the median home price in Temecula was 435,000. This is up 4 percent from April of 2016. And the number of jobs is approaching 53,000. This is up 2.5 percent compared to last year. And one of the, I think, most important indicators is our March unemployment rate for Temecula was 3.9 percent, and this is down from 4.2 percent the prior year. But in comparison, Riverside County is at 5 and 1/2. The state of California is at 4.9, and the nation's at 4.5. The proposed fiscal year 1718 operating budget and CIP has been drafted in line with the six core values of the city council adopted Quality of Life Master Plan from 2011. They are on the screen, and I will not read them all. It is important for me to acknowledge that we have spent a great deal of time and energy analyzing and modeling fiscal scenarios over the course of the next five years, making the best assumptions of known fiscal events, and reviewing the entire CIP document for project funding and priority consideration. Yet we also built these draft budgets around the city council adopted fiscal policies approved at mid-year, as I mentioned earlier. Granted, priorities can and will change, yet the five-year modeling has become an invaluable tool for us to utilize to ensure a solid fiscal and stable future is paramount. We are not just concerned about the year in front of us, but rather those that follow. As you will soon hear, we have elected to presume that two major capital improvement projects in the near term would be prioritized, given past city council direction and CIP discussions. They include the formal design, construction, and eventual operations of a new intergenerational community center at Margarita Community Park, formerly the YMCA, and the design and construction and operation of a teen village component at the existing CRC complex. There is a significant investment program to maintain our desired law enforcement staffing levels, taking into account the expected rising costs of labor. Similarly, there is a continued commitment to maintain fire staffing levels at four persons per engine, as well as include the expected increases in contract costs for the most recent CAL FIRE MOU. We have also included upgrades to Station 84, capital costs associated with replacement of a $1.3 million ladder truck over the next two years, as well as cost for replacement of four fire inspection vehicles. We have also included operational costs for Station 95 at a four-person level beginning July 1 of 2020. For consideration, we will also be introducing the launch of an annual fire inspection program, phased in, geared at education first with work towards compliance for a safer community. And not to be overshadowed will be a commitment to maintaining the amazing assets we have enjoyed delivering to our community over the past 28 years. This is addressed in both the annual operating budget and the capital improvement program, including investments in prioritized parks, prioritized streets, sidewalks, trails, prioritized facilities, fleet vehicles, and upgraded technology where prudent for service delivery. The annual operating budget and CIP also accounts for strategic investments over the next five years that have the ability to significantly lower our ongoing operating costs. Examples include streetlight acquisitions and LED conversions throughout the city, and a recycled water and plant material conversion project. The AOB CIP also accounts for leveraged investments of new revenue with existing more restrictive revenue to ultimately fund the project or projects, some of which would not come to fruition in the near term otherwise. We are very pleased to introduce not just a balanced budget for fiscal year 1718, but a balanced five-year forecasted budget and a very robust and aggressive capital improvement work program. And at this time, I'm going to turn the presentation over to Pat Thomas, our Public Works Director, who will walk us through the proposed CIP. Pat?
Thank you, Aaron. The Capital Improvement Program, also known as the CIP, is a comprehensive planning document that identifies and prioritizes major capital improvement projects over the next five years. Projects in this document have been scheduled in each of the five fiscal years based on community needs, as determined by the city council, and available funding. Many of the projects in the CIP are funded with one-time revenue sources that are non-recurring. Therefore, it's extremely important that the appropriate level of effort is expended to maximize the efficiency and effectiveness of these one-time dollar sources. The CIP budget document includes a project description sheet for each of the projects in the program. That project description sheet includes a description of the project, the benefit and core value that the project addresses, as Aaron mentioned earlier, the current status of the project, the estimated project cost, the source of funds being used on the project, and the estimated future operation and maintenance costs associated with the project. There are a total of 64 projects proposed in the CIP that are categorized as circulation projects aimed at reducing traffic congestion, infrastructure and public facilities projects, park and recreation projects, and a placeholder for the available housing funds administered by the SARDA or successor agency to the former redevelopment agency, and Luke Watson will be addressing that portion later in the presentation. There is approximately $535 million in total project costs within the CIP. $395.5 million represents the cost to complete the projects. $139.6 million has been previously spent on the listed capital projects, and we've identified $258.7 million in funded projects for the term of the five-year CIP. $35.2 million has been appropriated in fiscal year 2017-18, with $85.9 million that will be carried over from the prior years, leaving $137.6 million in funding anticipated over the next four years of the program. As shown in the table before you, $318 million of the project costs are identified for circulation improvements across 21 projects. There are 30 infrastructure projects totaling $50.5 million, 12 park and recreation projects totaling $14.5 million, and a placeholder project for the remaining $12.5 million in the redevelopment agency bonds. There is a total of 18 new projects requested in the CIP this year totaling over $32 million. These projects will be discussed in more detail in the slides to follow. Some of the major traffic circulation improvement projects include the Interstate 15 and Temecula Parkway or State Route 79 project, and our groundbreaking ceremony for that project is scheduled for next Tuesday, so hope to see you all there. The French Valley and I-15 Parkway Improvement Project Phase 2, the Diaz Road Widening Project, the Overland Drive Extension, and Marietta Creek Bridge over Overland Drive, and the Butterfield Road Extension Project, the third phase and final phase of that project. With respect to our streets, certainly one of the highest priorities we can strive for is the proper maintenance of our roadways. This next year, we will be updating our pavement management program to establish priorities for future years and investing over $12 million in pavement rehabilitation projects. This will continue our ongoing investment in our road network and includes $2 million in new Measure S funds, which will supplement approximately $6.6 million carried over from last year. The major road rehabilitation projects coming this year include rehabilitating Margarita Road between Temecula Parkway and Rancho California Road, Winchester Road on both the west and east side of I-15, a residential slurry seal project covering approximately 50 miles of residential roads, and a future grind and overlay project that will be based on the outcome of our updated pavement management program. We will also be investing in our traffic signal infrastructure to reduce congestion throughout the city, utilizing $560,000 in new Measure S funds, including enhancement and upgrades to our closed-circuit television cameras, fiber optic communications network, traffic signal controller upgrades, and equipment to improve and optimize our traffic signal timing coordination. There are also 30 infrastructure projects with over $50 million in costs. Notable projects include the Bike Lane and Trail Program, which includes $450,000 in carryover funds with an additional $233,000 allocated next fiscal year. For fiscal year 1718, $153,000 is allocated for the construction of a new pump track to be located at the Ronald Reagan Sports Park. The city will save significantly on its annual street lighting costs throughout the, through the streetlight acquisition and LED conversion project that Aaron mentioned earlier. Following approval of the purchase and sale agreement by the city council and Southern California Edison earlier this year, the PSA is scheduled for approval by the California Public Utility Commission later this year, along with further discussion about the options for financing the acquisition of approximately 7,500 streetlights throughout the city and conversion to new LED light fixtures. We will also be investigating how our streetlight infrastructure can be utilized for future smart city applications and other revenue-generating possibilities. The Information Technology Department has been working with consultants to inventory the city's facilities and develop recommendations for a comprehensive city-wide surveillance camera program. The goal of this program will be to support public safety, traffic management, and asset protection activities in service of our citizens. This program will begin in fiscal year 2017-18 and is anticipated to be complete by the end of fiscal year 2018-19. The city will utilize Measure S funds to leverage a grant from the Department of Water Resources to convert six landscaped areas within the city from irrigation with potable water to recycled water. This will result in reducing the cost of irrigation, as well as conservation of our valuable potable water resources. This project is scheduled for completion by June of 2018. The ADA Transition Plan, with $250,000 programmed to analyze facilities and public right-of-way, will be continued from the current CIP. Improvements to Fire Station 84 include the remodeling of the training room at a cost of $167,000. To further refine the project plan for the I-15 branding and visioning conceptual landscape plan, $100,000 is proposed to continue the work started by Visit Temecula Valley and gain acceptance of the plan by Caltrans for implementation with future freeway improvement projects. As the highest circulating library in Riverside County, the Ronald H. Roberts Temecula Public Library is proposed to have a second parking lot installed below the existing lot. A solar energy option is being explored as part of this project. A total of $1 million is proposed to evaluate the feasibility and design of a new parking structure in Old Town. Construction funding has not yet been identified. And as Aaron alluded to in his introduction, the next two projects are of a high priority, and we're fortunate to begin the design of these two highly anticipated facilities. Design funding for the rehabilitation of the former YMCA as an intergenerational recreation facility now called the Margarita Recreation Center is proposed for fiscal year 1718, with construction funding scheduled for fiscal year 1819 for this new intergenerational community center. A total of $645,000 is programmed for the design of the new teen village to be constructed at the Ronald Reagan Sports Park adjacent to the CRC facility. $8 million has been programmed for the construction of this facility in fiscal year 2021, leveraging Measure S funds with development impact fees. And both of these projects are being made possible by the passage of Measure S. The city has nearly $2 million programmed for sidewalk improvements for fiscal year 1718, including $550,000 to be spent citywide on sidewalk improvements based on the highest priority, $450,000 for converting the Old Town boardwalk sidewalks to stamped concrete. Additional sidewalk improvements are planned for Old Town on Moreno Road and Fifth and Sixth Streets. And finally, a total of $137,000 is programmed to complete the sidewalk along Inez Road between Winchester and County Center Drive. The pool at the CRC is due for renovation, including removal and replacement of pool decking, pool replastering, and installation of enhanced lighting system with energy-efficient LED fixtures. The city's tribute to our military continues with the installation of the Fallen Heroes Memorial at the Duck Pond. And a total of $470,000 is programmed for the coming year for park improvements, including parking lot repairs and resurfacing, concrete sidewalk replacement, fencing repairs and replacement, landscaping and irrigation system efficiency upgrades, drainage system improvements, and lighting system repairs and efficiency upgrades. The third and fourth synthetic turf fields located at Patricia H. Birdsong Sport Park will be replaced by August, again utilizing Measure S funds. $1.5 million is being allocated using Measure S and other funding sources for the enhancement of the city parks' playground equipment and play surfaces, beginning with the new theme design playgrounds at Vale Ranch Park, Nicholas Park, Margarita Park, Veterans Park, Sunset Park, and Butterfield Stage Park. A total of 10 public restrooms throughout the city will be renovated, again utilizing Measure S funds, in addition to a full renovation and expansion of the restroom and snack bar facilities at the Ronald Reagan Sports Park. I'm now going to turn the presentation over to Luke Watson, our Community Development Director, who will provide details on the SARDA Capital Improvement Budget.
Thanks, Pat. In 2010 and 2011, the former Redevelopment Agency issued affordable housing bonds. As a result of the dissolution of the Redevelopment Agency in 2012, the remaining $12.5 million in affordable housing bond proceeds were passed to the city for use in the development of affordable housing. In order to utilize these bond proceeds for their specifically intended purpose, affordable housing, the city released a request for proposals, or an RFP, to solicit innovative project ideas from the development community. The release of the RFP was intended to engage a competitive process whereby development teams would vie for the remaining bond proceeds, and thus, the city could then select the most impactful and cost-effective developments possible. This effort resulted in the receipt of 20 separate affordable housing development proposals, a record for the city in an affordable housing RFP. The city council reviewed all 20 proposals at the April 11 city council meeting and made specific recommendations on which projects should move on in the selection process. The development teams chosen to continue to the next stage are currently preparing new financial pro forma information for city review and will be scheduled for interviews in the next few weeks. This competitive selection process is anticipated to be complete by the end of summer. I will now turn it back over to Aaron Adams to complete the CIP portion of the presentation.
The proposed CIP program was presented to the Planning Commission on May 17 for consistency with the general plan and to the Public Traffic Safety Commission on May 25. A presentation is scheduled for the Community Services Commission on June 12, and formal adoption of the final CIP budget by the city council is slated for Tuesday, June 13. At this time, I'd like to introduce our Finance Director, Jennifer Hennessy, who will provide an overview of the fiscal year 1718 annual operating budget.
Thanks, Erin. The general fund, which serves as the primary operating fund for the city, is structurally balanced in fiscal year 1718 with revenues exceeding expenditures by $2.1 million. Revenues projected to reach $75 million this year, which is a 5% increase over the prior year. Expenditures are projected at $72.9 million, which is an increase of 2.3 percent over the prior year. Public safety costs reflect an increase of 17 percent due primarily to the enhanced staffing levels supported by Measure S. The general fund contributions include the $2.1 million annual debt service payment for the Civic Center and $540,000 for the financing of the streetlight acquisition program previously mentioned. The general fund is projected to end fiscal year 1718 with $28.3 million in fund balance. Policy-level reserves are fully funded at $18.2 million, which represents 25 percent of the general fund operating budget. $2.3 million is assigned for capital project expenditures for next fiscal year, and $359,000 is set aside for the Pachanga-funded officer, leaving a total available fund balance of $7.4 million for one-time expenditures. The budget process begins each year in January with a projection of revenue, which serves as the foundation for the development of the operating budget. To begin this process, staff analyzes each major revenue source, reviews economic trends, and adjusts for local anomalies such as new businesses or development projects expected to occur during the coming year. In addition, we receive input from a team of consultants for both sales and property tax projections. Continued growth is expected- Continued growth is expected in the city's major revenue sources. The city's largest revenue source, sales tax, is projected to increase by 5% excluding Measure S, as the local economy continues to remain strong and we're seeing double-digit growth in many sectors of the economy. Property tax revenue is expected to be 4% higher than the prior year due to the combination of increased home values, new home inventories, and the recapture of property tax from the homes that received value reductions during the recession. Franchise fees are received from local utility and cable providers for the use of public right-of-way. This revenue source is projected to decrease due to a combination of lower electric rates and a decreasing customer base of cable subscribers. Measure S funds are accounted for in a separate fund for transparency purposes, and a portion is transferred into the general fund to cover the cost of the 10 new police officers added at mid-year, as well as the new fire inspection program and fire contract increases. Overall, revenues are projected to increase by 5% to a total of $75 million. As illustrated in the pie chart, general fund revenue comes from a variety of sources. Sales tax is exactly half of total revenue at 50%. Property tax contributes 11%. Property tax in lieu of vehicle license fees generates 10%. 5% comes from franchise fees, an additional 4% comes from transient occupancy tax, and 4% is received as reimbursement revenue from the CIP for administration as well as from Pachanga for the funding of a sworn officer. And mentioned previously, Measure S revenue is allocated to multiple funds. A total of $4.1 million will be transferred to the general fund, representing 5% of general fund revenue, with the remaining Measure S revenue allocated to the CIP, TCSD, information technology, and various replacement funds. The general fund operating expenditures for 17-18 is projected at $72.9 million, which is the largest operating budget in the city's history. Public safety makes up the majority of the budget and reflects the investment of Measure S to fund Measure S funding to bring the police staffing ratio to a desired one officer per 1,000 residents. The police contract reflects a projected rate increase of 8%, and the fire contract includes a 9% increase, including a newly proposed fire inspection program. Administrative departments reflect a 9% increase due to inflationary growth and the addition of a new position in human resources to be dedicated to citywide recruitment activity. The public works budget is flat compared to the prior year due to the elimination of one position, which offset the inflationary growth within the department. Community development reflects a 14% increase, however, these higher costs are fully reimbursed by developers who fund dedicated, part-time workers and consultants to expedite their projects. Finally, the non-departmental category reflects a 59% decrease as the TCSD contribution is now funded with Measure S as opposed to the general fund. 55% of general fund resources are dedicated to public safety, which represents a 6 percentage point increase from the prior year. Public works, including CIP administration, parks maintenance, and land development, make up 18% of the total budget with a budget of $13.5 million. CIP admin is fully reimbursed from eligible capital projects and is reflected as a general fund revenue. Administration, which includes the city manager's office, emergency services, economic development, finance, human resources, city attorney, city clerk, council, and community support departments, total 12% of the general fund operating budget. Community development, including planning and building and safety, receives 7% of the general fund with a budget of $5.3 million. And the non-departmental category, including debt service payments on the Civic Center, make up 8% of the general fund budget. As the largest expenditure of the general fund, the police department budget is projected at $33.6 million for the coming year, which reflects an increase of 17% over the prior year. The budget includes the continued funding for the 10 police officers added in April after Measure S took effect. The budget includes the replacement of two motorcycles and the continued 50% cost-sharing arrangement with Temecula Valley Unified School District to fund five school resource officers. The police department is currently staffed with 111 sworn officers, 19 community service officers, and 17 administrative personnel. The fire department budget is projected at $15.7 million, which is offset by an 8.5 million fire tax credit collected via property tax payments. The net impact to the city is $7.2 million, which is an 18.5% increase over the prior year, due to the negotiated labor contract between CalFire and the state, combined with the addition of the new fire inspection program, which includes two new positions. The department has 67 employees and maintains the four-person-per-engine staffing model. The fire budget also includes the replacement of four inspection vehicles and a ladder truck. I will now turn the presentation over to Fire Chief Charlie DeHart, who will present the newly proposed fire inspection program.
Thank you, Jennifer. The state of California requires annual inspections of a number of facilities throughout the city. These facilities include schools, public, private, and charter, hotels, motels, apartment complexes, and licensed care facilities with a clientele of over six clients. These facilities need to be inspected on an annual basis to ensure there are no fire or life safety issues threatening the community. Recently, the state has seen catastrophic incidents, such as the Oakland Fire, that has sparked concerns within the Fire Marshal's Office throughout the state. Within our community, the Sage Canyon Apartment Fire highlights the needs for a required inspection program. Due to these type of incidents, other similar fires, the state and county are ensuring these required inspections are being conducted. The city of Temecula Fire Department would like to implement this program rather than have the state or county come in and take the local control away from us. The fire department proposed program will be coming out of the city's general fund. The fire department is proposing that the city subsidize the program for the first year and waive the fees of the inspection program. In addition to waiving the fees, the fire department will be requesting the hiring of two new positions. The proposed positions will be one new fire systems inspector via county position, and one new community development technician, a city position. The main focus of the program will be on educating the businesses within the community on fire life safety and how to become compliant with California Fire Code. We are here to work with the community and establish an ongoing working relationship as well as continue to offer an open-door policy regarding the program.
The budget includes a $40,000 increase to the community support grants, bringing the total funding for this program to $100,000. Additionally, a $750,000 lump sum payment towards the city's unfunded liabilities is also proposed for fiscal year 17-18 with the intent to reduce future operating costs. Capital outlay and technology requests include the replacement of several fleet vehicles, including the $1.3 million fire ladder truck, which is spread over two fiscal years due to the lead time in ordering the new truck. Additional requests include replacement of technology equipment, copiers, and council meeting broadcast equipment. With an estimated revenue of $23 million per year, Measure S has undoubtedly changed the landscape of the city's annual budget and CIP projections. Expenditures have been programmed in accordance with the council's appropriation guidelines. The fiscal year 17-18 budget includes an allocation of $21.3 million in Measure S funding programmed by appropriation category. 25% or $5.3 million towards public safety, 1% or $195,000 towards asset management, 44% or $9.3 million towards capital projects, and 30% or $6.5 million towards general services. Public safety remains the city's top priority, with a $5.3 million investment of Measure S for 17-18 to fund 10 police officers, the new fire inspection program, the increase in the fire contract, the replacement of the ladder truck and four inspection vehicles, the citywide surveillance camera project, and the improvements at Fire Station 84. Investments in asset management ensure the ongoing maintenance and replacement of the city's aging infrastructure, vehicles, facilities, and technology are funded adequately into the future. Mid-year appropriations provided funding for several asset management studies necessary to determine the adequate funding levels for each asset category. Until the completion of these studies, Measure S allocations towards asset management have been redirected into specific CIP projects for next year. For 17-18 allocation to asset management projects include the completion of TCSD's class registration software program, a citywide technology audit, and a project to improve transparency and access to city records. A total of $9.3 million, or 44% of Measure S, is requested to fund six different capital projects, many of which would be considered asset management projects, as detailed by Patter during the CIP portion of this presentation. And a total of $6.5 million is allocated to fund TCSD, the library, and residential streetlights, as well as an increased level of service provided by parks maintenance. As you've heard throughout the presentation so far and illustrated by the past few slides, you can see the widespread use of Measure S dollars at work throughout our city.
Staffing levels citywide reflect a net decrease of one position, down to 157.2 authorized full-time positions, including the five city council members. As illustrated in the chart, the city staffing levels have steadily declined over the past 11 years. In fact, staffing levels have not been this lean since 2001. I believe this demonstrates the point that we have truly attempted to do more with less this past decade coming out of the recession. While this statistic reflects authorized positions, it is important to note that we have been challenged operationally by having many of these positions strategically left vacant and are only now in a position to complete formal recruitments. As I have shared with many of you, this is an area I intend to monitor very closely to be sure that with the aggressive capital plan and ongoing programs and services we are discussing today, that we are able to deliver the expected level of service the city council desires and the community has come to expect. As we embark on this coming year, I intend to keep this dialogue open with each of you for possible adjustments, additions, to assure we are properly staffed for our work plan. At this time, I'd like to introduce Kevin Hawkins, our Community Services Director, who will walk us through the highlights of the Temecula Community Service District Budget.
Thanks, Aaron. Well, the mission of TCSD is to improve the quality of life for residents through a complement of programs, services, events, and activities, or as we call it, creating community, right, through people parks and programs. In the fiscal year 17-18 TCSD annual operating budget, the projected revenue is estimated at $21.3 million. The major funding sources are broken down by TCSD rates and charges at $10 million, $1.85 million, which represents the TCSD portion of Measure C funding. The other half goes to park maintenance, which is included in the general fund. $6.4 million is a contribution from Measure S, and $2.8 million is made up of a combination of recreation fees and contract class user fees and other revenue sources. Again, which brings us to total projected revenues at $21.3 million. Our next slide provides our proposed expenditures, also at $21.3 million. On the expenditure side, our main categories are as follows. $9.8 million parks and recreation, $7.9 million recycling and refuse hauling, $1.5 million slope maintenance, $985,000 for residential street lighting, $861,000 for the Ronald H. Roberts Temecula Public Library, $246,000 operation and maintenance costs associated with the Harvest and Lake Park, and $9,850 for dirt road maintenance services at Leifer Road. Now, regarding the city's special tax, 20 years ago when Measure C was passed by overwhelming 77% in 1997, the voters established a tax rate at $74.44 per home per year, which we are proposing to charge again this fiscal year. Our residents, however, receive an excellent level of service because of the city's general fund contribution towards parks and recreation services. In fact, if our parks and recreation programs was totally funded solely through Measure C funding, it would cost our residents $156 per year. While it was always envisioned that the general fund and now Measure S would subsidize the Measure C contribution for parks and recreation services in a reasonable amount, this is an area that we must remain sensitive to today and in outer years. As you can see, our residents realize a savings of $81.33 per home per year, as this is paid by the newly approved Measure S 1-cent sales tax and not by Measure C. Now regarding our highlights, the continuation of Southern California's premier car show, the annual Temecula Rod Run, which brings in over 55,000 people to Old Town each year to enjoy the signature event. From Old Town to the Ronald Reagan Sports Park, the Fourth of July Parade and Fireworks Show will again showcase Temecula's unrivaled community pride. One of our most heartwarming and inspiring events, our annual special games, will mark 10 years of celebrating our special needs athletes. Christmas Time will offer Santa's Electric Light Parade, Santa's House, and ice skating in Old Town. Also in Old Town, over a three-day period, the Temecula Arden Street Painting Festival will take place. Additionally, the city will pay tribute to our local veterans at the annual Patriotic Salute to Veterans Day event, featuring the Inland Valley Symphony on the steps of the Civic Center. And finally, we will continue to remember and honor those who lost their lives on 9/11 at a special ceremony held at the Temecula Duck Pond. The city also continues to collaborate with both the Old Town Temecula Association as well as Visit Temecula Valley to bring residents and visitors these wide-ranging seasonal attractions, which are synonymous with the high quality of life here in Temecula. In other highlights, this year TCSD staff will continue a Margarita Park Needs Assessment to drive future facility design and intergenerational programming at the MRC or the former YMCA facility. In addition to the extremely popular activities at the CPRS award-winning Eagle Sword Playground and Splash Pad, Human Services will be expanding on the successful Global Citizens Horticulture Program model to develop a new workforce readiness program for special needs individuals entitled the Intergenerational Horticulture Program. The new program will partner with the county, our Nicholas Foundation, and Area Farms to teach in-demand skills such as vegetable production, landscaping, irrigation, and basic business practices, and then assist participants with job placement. Staff will continue to explore recommendations from the recently completed senior services master plan process, as well as begin the RFP process for citywide parks master plan and the much anticipated Teen Village Design. Our cultural arts team continues to showcase the best in arts and culture through the Old Town Temecula Community Theater, Art Off the Walls on the first Friday of the month, and a new offering, From the Page to the Stage, working with the Barn Stage Company. Now, TCSD will showcase these free 60-minute programs that are engaging, entertaining, and educational. They will discuss how works of literature from historical novels to comic strips can be turned into musicals using the theme of reading to stir the imagination. Songs from these musicals will be featured with the pianists in live performances at the Ronald H. Roberts Temecula Public Library. And with the anticipated completion of the playground at Sam Hicks Park and the recently acquired property adjacent to the Children's Museum, TCSD will continue to work with our various friends groups to bring interesting and creative programs and activities to these locations. As always, TCSD will continue to offer the highest quality of sports, recreation, and aquatics programs the next fiscal year for a very deserving community. As community ambassadors, the city's parks and open spaces will continue to be safeguarded through our Park Ranger Program. And a critical part of TCSD operations, the Ronald H. Roberts Temecula Public Library provides excellent library services for our community with the monthly circulation of approximately 50,000 items, highest in the county. In concert with other city staff, public safety, the nonprofit community, faith-based organizations, and regional partners, TCSD organizations, and regional partners, TCSD will continue to provide program administration through the homeless outreach liaison of the city's three-link program of collaboration, coordination, and communication in a more responsible, yet compassionate way to address the issue of homelessness in Temecula. That from our community services to community development, I'd like to again turn to Community Development Director Luke Watson.
Thank you, Kevin. Finally, the proposed successor agency to the Temecula Redevelopment Agency, otherwise known as SARDA, fiscal year seventeen eighteen operational budget includes debt obligations of the former Temecula Redevelopment Agency. The city's redevelopment agency was dissolved by the state in two thousand and twelve, and since then, the city has worked to wind down the remaining SARDA obligations. It is critical to note that the funding source for the repayment of the SARDA obligations is the Riverside County Redevelopment Property Tax Trust Fund. This fund is made up of property tax receipts collected by the county of Riverside. The city's only responsibility is to administer the SARDA obligations until the term of those obligations expires. The county trust fund proceeds are simply passed through the city. No general fund dollars are obligated or used to satisfy the SARDA obligations. The State Department of Finance approved the following outstanding obligations for two thousand and seventeen eighteen. First, debt service payments for the former RDA bonds, which include the two thousand and ten and two thousand and eleven issuances, and total six point six million, and one point four million is other DOF approved obligations, including the Abbott Owner Participation Agreement, Abbott Development and Disposition Agreement, and Affordable Housing Obligations. I will turn it back over to Aaron to discuss the next steps.
Thanks, Luke. The formal adoption of the fiscal year seventeen eighteen operating budget in CIP will be, as I mentioned, presented to the city council at the meeting of June thirteenth. Per city policy, staff creates a five-year financial forecast of the general fund and TCSD each year, and this year we've added the new Measure S fund. These long-range forecasts serve as strategic planning tools to help evaluate the city's ability to meet its long-term obligations. The benefit of long-range planning is to alert the decision-makers of trends in time to implement changes if necessary.
The five-year forecast includes realistic revenue growth assumptions based on recent trends and known changes on the horizon. Expenditure projections reflect information received from the county related to both police and fire service contracts, CalPERS rate changes, and fixed staffing levels for all non-safety departments. Police costs are expected to increase between five to eight percent per year due to the rising cost of labor and benefits, and fire costs reflect growth rates between six to eight percent per year, plus the addition of nine fire personnel in fiscal year two thousand and twenty-one to staff Fire Station Ninety-Five in the Roarpaw Ranch area. At this time last year, the general fund was facing a significant structural deficit due to expenditures rising faster than revenue. With the passage of Measure S, the budget gap has now been closed, and the general fund is not only balanced in all five years, but reserves are fully funded as well. Last year's projection, as indicated by the blue line on the chart, showed a projected fund balance of thirteen million by the end of the fifth year, with only sixty-three percent of the reserves fully funded, or funded, due to the structural imbalance within the general fund. In contrast, the general fund is now projected to have over twenty-two million in fund balance, with one hundred percent of the policy-level reserves fully funded. As summarized on the screen, Measure S has also been modeled over the coming five years in accordance with council's appropriation guidelines. The chart illustrates the rapid shift of funding towards public safety as the cost for police and fire continue to rise over the coming five years. Measure S funding dedicated to public safety grows from twenty-five percent this next year to forty-three percent by year five. Also illustrated is the ongoing reinvestment into the city's roads, vehicles, facilities, parks, and technology necessary to properly maintain and replace our city's assets. The annual contributions to asset management will be refined as the individual studies are completed over this next year. Again, because of the amount on Measure S revenue, I'm sorry, again, because the amount of Measure S revenue is merely an estimate at this point in time, we've been conservative in programming this new revenue source and have appropriated, on average, only ninety percent of what we expect to receive.
In closing, I would again just like to reiterate the uniqueness and privilege of the opportunity we have been given to balance out five years, meet our reserve requirements, fund public safety to our desired levels, invest heavily into the needed capital projects, invest into proper maintenance of existing assets, and maintain the high quality of life of programs and services of our residents have come to expect. We have a great deal to be proud of and remain a blessed community on many fronts. I'd like to thank all the department heads and their staff for their efforts in preparing excellent budget submittals. I also want to recognize the members of the budget team who have dedicated many, many hours over the past several months to complete this year's AOB and CIP binders. My thanks to Jennifer Hennessy, Rudy Graciano, Pascal Brown, Tricia Hawke, and Shirley Robinson. And with that, your staff is available to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Aaron. It's just phenomenal, and you know, last year, sitting in these same seats, it wasn't nearly as nice a picture as we're looking at now, but thanks to Measure S, you know, our future is very, very bright. Does anyone have questions? Jeff?
Question of fire. When you talked about the new fire inspection program, I have mixed feelings over, but I think it's long overdue, and so we need to roll it out. In some discussions prior to this meeting, I know that I had with Aaron and our team, we talked about a possible scenario where, I understand that we're waiving the fees for the first year, some discussion about using that as a baseline for certain businesses that are clearly less of a fire risk than others, and whether we could look at them differently. And rather than being inspected every year, maybe they only need to be inspected every three years or every five years. High-risk, for instance, restaurant business, I imagine would be considered high-risk, should be inspected every year. So has there been any consideration of that kind of a rollout?
We have talked about some of that. The problem with that is a lot of their basic life safety stuff is required to be inspected on a yearly basis, fire extinguishers, exits, and stuff like that. So we're going to have to do an annual inspection on those businesses.
One of the things, if I may, Madam Mayor, that we also discussed was the possibility of allowing those low-risk businesses to self-inspect, whereas they filled out a form, you know, once a year, in addition to a less frequent physical inspection. Any thoughts on that?
We could look into something like that. We could also look into having the engine companies do a basic fire life safety inspection, where the engine company just stop by and check just the fire extinguishers and exit type signs.
I think that would be a step in the right direction. I can tell you, having spent years as a retailer long ago, although you know it's necessary, it's also onerous on a business, and the degree to which we can alleviate some of that difficulty for them certainly is something we should look at. So thank you.
Right. We're sympathetic to that.
You good?
Mm-hmm.
Anybody else?
Councilmember Camachero, just to clarify, I think the businesses that we're just now discussing were probably like a phase two, right? They would be probably two years out, and what we're proposing for the first year was the highly congregated areas of hotels, motels, schools, hospitals, congregate care facilities. Is that?
Correct. It'll be our larger-scale facilities, the hotels.
And the smaller to medium-sized businesses probably wouldn't, we wouldn't get to until the following year.
Correct.
Anybody else? Matt?
Well, just following up on that line of discussion, then, I want to make sure that that's part of the plan, though, not that just we're talking about it, but that there's some sort of policy that we're putting in place to make sure that the restaurants and other businesses that are potentially high-risk actually make it onto that second-year inspection. So if we're going to phase it in, you know, let's create that policy here.
That is the plan.
Okay.
Stu, did you have anything?
No.
No, good. I have a question. Pat, can you explain to us, please, how we prioritize our roads? Do we just walk out and say, oh, this road looks like it needs repairs?
No, actually, we've just, and we'll be bringing a contract to the city council in June for a company that we've selected to do our rating and prioritization, and they actually use a vehicle that has lasers and cameras mounted on the front of it, and they drive all the streets and actually video all the streets to identify the cracking in the streets, use that information to develop what's called a PCI, a Pavement Condition Index, and then that's what we use to prioritize the streets that will be maintained. So sometime this summer, you'll see a van driving every street within the city that looks kind of a space-age-type vehicle, and that's what's going to collect the data that we use to do that prioritization.
Chief Kubel making noted that. You may get calls from people who see a strange-looking van driving slowly through their neighborhood. So it's very scientific and computerized.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. I didn't have any other questions either. Comments?
Just one question.
Sure. Oh, go ahead, Matt.
When we move into the, what was it, June twelfth meeting? Is that right? Yeah. You know, one of the things I'd like to see us do is have, I know we're accounting for all of our city finances, but you know, we spend a tremendous effort in trying to secure federal and state funding for projects throughout the city, and there's no accounting necessarily for that. I mean, we know what's happening, you know, we talk about those projects, but it'd be nice to see as part of our budget, you know, some accounting of what those dollars are and projects that we know of being invested in the city, because it's just a good example of, you know, all the other work that's going into it. It might not be our dollar, but certainly a significant investment going on, you know, and in particular, I'm thinking like Marietta Creek and other investments.
And that's actually listed in the large CIP, it's just not here today for everyone to see, but yes, we go out for money anyplace we can find it. Any comments? No comments? My goodness. Well...
Another great budget.
Yeah, fantastic. Great job again, everyone. So then, in that case, I would accept a motion.
Public comment.
Oh, that's right. Public comments. Do we have public comments?
And I believe this is a receive and file at this time, not requiring any action, but we do have nine public speakers.
Okay.
The first speaker is Daniel Foster, to be followed by Dennis Ferguson.
Mr. Foster, good morning.
Yeah.
How are you?
Nice to see you.
Haven't seen you in a while.
Been a while, been about five years. Nice to see you, Mayor, and City Council, City Manager, and staff, and community. My name's Daniel Foster. I've worked in the Inland Empire and San Diego most of my professional career, holding titles of President, CEO of the Community Foundation Riverside-San Bernardino Counties, and also Executive Director of the Riverside Art Museum and the Oceanside Art Museum. The last year, I've been entertaining the notion of bringing my professional and personal life to Temecula, and I've been meeting with arts leaders and nonprofit leaders and assessing the terrain of this community. Certainly, this is a great quality-of-life community, great schools, great streets, safety, healthcare, amenities, recreation, parks, natural resources, the climate, the proximity, do all kinds of great things in Southern California. But constructively, I want to share some observations, and my concern about the arts and culture community in Temecula and in the Temecula Valley area. Having been an arts person, I believe that a great community only arrives when it really has a thriving arts and culture community, and that's so often the voice and the unifier that brings the community together and actually defines the identity and the character and the values of the people that live in that community. I must admit, I feel the hard and soft infrastructure of the Temecula arts community is woefully deficient and not invested in, and this is what I've been hearing from many of the community members, including staff members, that you have outstanding staff working in the arts, like Bea Barnad and Tracy Frick, such people as Bernie Truax and many board members and staff members of the symphony, the theater, Dorland, and other arts organizations I've been talking with. And I think Maslow's hierarchy has arrived in Temecula to attend to the investment in a solid, thriving arts community from an economic development standpoint, from a community branding standpoint, from a downtown, old-town revitalization or identification standpoint. When you look at the hard infrastructure, there's a serious absence of facilities, particularly towards the visual arts community, absolutely no art museum, and I'd say this is a good time to start having a conversation in this community around an art museum or a municipal art gallery with quality presentation spaces that highlight the great talent of visual artists in this community and bring professional artists in this community to educate our students and our overall community, the value of the visual arts community. I do see performing arts going on and the outstanding community theater and the volunteer symphony here, but the facilities are deficient when you compare to other cities of like size and capacity as Temecula has. I'm particularly concerned about the soft infrastructure. The last time the city did a cultural plan was in nineteen ninety-nine, and as I understand, every item on that cultural plan has been checked off and accomplished, and there is no cultural plan in existence right now. Fail to plan, plan to fail, and I believe the city has a responsibility to develop a strong vision and a strong planning process that brings the community and the city together around a long-term vision of investing in the arts. I'm curious as to why there is no Arts Commission, and it operates under the Community Services Commission right now. And in many cities of this size, they ultimately move towards a full-time arts and cultural affairs manager and department, and I suggest the city to consider such at this time, as you're developing and have some free monies from Measure S to consider investing in. I think the arts is very important to an entire community. Over fifty percent of the most communities engage in the arts, so I think it would be a worthy investment that would serve much of the community and the population here. And I also feel that the arts is a tremendous economic driver in partnership with economic development strategy, cultural tourism, downtown revitalization. So in my notes, I've given a little bit more further evidence of some of my assessment of the state of the arts in Temecula. I think this is a fabulous city with great leadership, and I would love to talk with you and the arts community further as how we can move further in making this a very thriving, strong arts community in Temecula in the future.
Well, Daniel, thank you for volunteering to spearhead this effort, and I would love to meet with you.
I welcome that. Bernie Truax and a variety of others have been phenomenal in terms of starting to invest in that vision, and let's sit down and talk.
So it's been five years, and now you've come back and just jumped in with both feet?
Why not?
And we graciously accept.
Thank you.
All right. We'll be in touch.
Good to see you.
Make sure we have your contact info.
Very good. It's on the materials I provided, and I'll be here in town, meeting with you whenever you'd like. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Madam Mayor, the next speaker is Dennis Ferguson, to be followed by John Kelleher.
Dennis, good morning.
Good morning, everyone. Glad to be here again. It's been some time as well. Certainly echo the sentiments of the last speaker. I'm Dennis Ferguson. I sit on the Board of Visit Temecula. I've also been past Chair of Visit Temecula, and have had a career of thirty-five years in tourism and hospitality development, especially in emerging markets across North America. As a board member of Visit Temecula, we're strongly advocating for tourism economic development to be a stronger qualifying when prioritizing the Measure S spending plan. Fifty percent of the city of Temecula's sales tax is generated by visitor spend. It's more important now than ever to use a portion of this revenue by providing an enhanced quality experience for the visitor that will attract more travelers and influence extended stays. We're seeing private development currently everywhere within Old Town, Pachanga, of course, wine country, and Visit Temecula touts itself as Southern California Wine Country, and we put our money where our mouth is when it comes to that, and I'm so proud that the city has followed suit with that by calling themselves the heart of Southern California Wine Country. And projects that will only continue enhancing tourism is great for everyone in our eyes. Specific projects that are important for the tourism community that will serve everyone is especially geared towards the I-15 Beautification Plan. Although it's great to see efforts of actually placing some money for a study of the I-15 Beautification Plan, more, we believe, can be done in order to make that happen and creating, create that amazing first impression that benefits everyone. Not only the tourism community... that amazing first impression that benefits everyone, not only the tourism community but the residents. The assessed property value of the City of Temecula is more than fourteen and three-quarters billion, that's the net taxable values of sixteen, seventeen, and it generates six-point-seven million in tax revenues for the city. Empirical evidence indicates that a tourism industry with a premium focus like Temecula has a strong positive impact on property values. Even a one percent improvement to property values would have a positive impact on those property values of more than a hundred and forty-seven million dollars. So, projects such as the I-15 Beautification Plan, to the Creek Walk, and what can be done with that, to Hospitality and Visitors Center, or as the last gentleman said, supporting the arts and cultural community, large concert venues, were no longer a weekend destination. We are seven days a week, and everyone is putting their money behind that, inclusive of what you're seeing at Pachanga currently, and I think we need to support these efforts, and Visit Temecula thinks we need to support these efforts greater through Measure S. Thank you, appreciate your time.
The next speaker is John Kelleher, to be followed by Ed Dool.
Mr. Kelleher, good morning.
Good morning, everybody. My name is John Kelleher, I think most of you know me, I've been in Temecula for approximately twenty years. I serve on the Board of Visit Temecula along with Dennis and a few others that are here in this room. Also served on the commission, the so-called Blue Ribbon Commission that helped to develop the Quality-of-Life Master Plan. I'm here with you today to emphasize the importance, just as Dennis did, emphasize the importance of investing in the Temecula Beautification Project, and also to highlight a few specific quality-of-life benefits of doing so. As referenced, that beautification project is essentially a plan to create a sense of arrival and of identity along I-15 within Temecula, and in particular, along our interchanges. It was supported by a broad coalition, of course spearheaded by Visit Temecula, but supported by the Chamber of Commerce, the Promenade Mall, Pachanga, among many others, and it's been embraced conceptually by the council, but what is lacking now is, is complete funding to see it through and implement it. This project impacts several core values, what I want to focus on really is the, our economic prosperity, one of the core values identified in the Quality-of-Life Master Plan. A few relevant statistics, Dennis brought up a couple of them, a few others, one that we often tout and that everybody's very aware of, tourism does account for approximately seven-hundred million dollars in direct economic impact, approximately seven thousand jobs within the Temecula Valley. Those numbers are strong and they are growing robustly right now. Approximately fifty percent of the sales tax that is generated within Temecula does come from visitors. That means, for example, Measure S, approximately eleven million of Measure S at current times is derived from non-locals. One final factoid of relevance, the tourism promotion is achieved primarily by an organization that is funded by self-assessment. In other words, the visitor pays directly for that organization that then goes out and promotes tourism, so that's not coming from the locals, it's actually coming directly from the tourists. It's also guided by a Board of Volunteers, a bunch of us who are crazy enough to spend a great deal of our time not getting paid to do something that we hope will, will benefit the entire valley and of course, our industry. It's important to note, however, that Visit Temecula is highly restricted. Our funding model does not allow us to do much more than promote. We are not allowed to spend, for example, on assets, on infrastructure. We rely on our partners, like the city, to accomplish those objectives. So you'll hear a little bit more about the beautification project, I know that I'm a bit speaking to the choir because I think it's something that is generally widely supported by our community, but what's important to us is that, that everyone in the city truly understands the importance of investing in a project that will generate real economic value, essentially spending money on something that generates money. So thank you all for what you do for our community, thank you for embracing the beautification project up-to-date, and thank you for giving consideration in the future to generating more funding for this important project.
Thank you, John.
The next speaker is Ed Dool, to be followed by Ross Jackson.
Good morning, Ed.
Good morning. My name is Ed Dool, a property owner in Temecula, a developer, and a visionary. I came here to Temecula, like many others, in the mid-eighties, and was one of the entrepreneurs that turned things around with many others into the two thousand four, two thousand five. I'm here to talk about Old Town, that's, that's my forte, and what we're looking at is parking. Now, we've talked about parking in Old Town, I want to thank the council and the city for approving one million dollars to study our parking garages. We've done parking studies in the past in Old Town and throughout the city, and those, those parking assessments come up that we really are fine with parking, except for they're spread out. The parking garage, garages should go vertical. My representation today is the Sixth Street Parking Lot, which we're hoping will be in the study to go vertical. My particular project, the Temecula Stage Stop, which was built in nineteen ninety-two, was a three-phase expansion. First expansion was completed in nineteen ninety-four, second phase, thank you to Councilman Mike Nagar for the second phase, which was the restrooms, added restrooms, and expansion of the Temecula Wine and Beer Garden. And now we're looking at our Phase Three to go vertical down at the north end, and we feel that with your million dollars that you've allocated for studies, that we would like to be a part of that. We would like to go vertical on our property to, to go along with the parking structure at that end. In your study, we're looking, but we do not see, we do not see the funding for the parking garage, we would like to see our parking garages, we would like to see something be allocated for that in possibly the future twenty nineteen, twenty twenty. But, other things that the city has accomplished is unbelievable. We've done, you folks have done a beautiful job with a lot of us entrepreneurs, and we'd just like to see this keep moving forward and make sure that we can look at those funding for the parking, and I want to thank you very much.
Thank you, Ed. The next speaker is Ross Jackson, to be followed by Jeff Gatawski.
Good morning, Mr. Jackson.
Good morning, and thank you very much for allowing me to speak, and welcome to, this is pretty important to us, and as a resident since two thousand four, all these faces are very familiar with, to me, being at council meetings and public functions as well. And in regards to the arts, being a honorary art judge at several of the street and art shows, as well as as an art judge at the first night in our, in the building of Truax Building. My question today is, in the past, the TCSD program was funded out of the General Fund in Measure C. The tax assessment of each residence was seventy-four dollars and forty-four cents. This year, the five-point-three million dollars being funded out of the TCSD and, is now being funded out of Measure S, where is the five-point-three million dollars that would have been allocated from the General Fund now being allocated? These parks were funded in the past from Measure C funds. How much of the current Measure C funds this year, and what is projected over the next five years? Is Measure C funding unavailable to meet these demands? And for transparency purposes, in regards to Measure S funding, would it not be better that the TCSD have contributed the, the money to the General Fund, to continue to come out of the General Fund?
Yeah, that's weird.
Quite, quite concerned that the Measure S is being stretched, everybody's coming up with their hands out, and I think what's happening is that we should focus on the plan and stick with the plan, and utilize Measure S as, as is properly fit. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Jeff Gatawski, to be followed by Clay Spiegel.
Good morning.
Good morning. So thank you all for allowing me the opportunity to speak to you all this morning. So, my question is, why are we investing our Measure S funds on a teen village in the YMCA? Why is this not being paid out of park developer impact fees? We are investing Measure S money from a funding source designed to cover the cost of the budget and CIP shortfall. This will add additional operating and maintenance costs to the operating budget. This, the teen village is the largest single-line item of five-point-five million dollars for Measure S, and will have ongoing financial burdens. It's not too long ago that I would have been the recipient of this type of project, and it does not fall definitely to me the support that a community has. As disadvantaged youth, I was very privy to libraries, mentorship, after-school programs, et cetera. I encourage you all to look very carefully at the eight-point-nine million dollars that would go to the teen village that could otherwise be used to get that, those resources to those who need it the most, after-school programs, and other places where it can truly make an impact like it has made an impact for my life. Thank you all for the time.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Clay Spiegel, to be followed by Bernie Truax.
Good morning, Mr. Spiegel.
Good morning. Thanks for having all of us and allowing all of us some time to, to speak to you. So I'm a local resident, business owner, property owner, father and husband, and, and a board member for the Old Town Temecula Property Owners Association.
I receive your catalog.
I wish, it was mine. So, my question is, the, the Measure S revenue grows year after year, it's in the projections, but the allocation to the CIP budget increases for the first two years and then significantly decreases after that. I think that this investment is important to our growth and revenue in the tax base, and so I'm just curious why it's not consistent with the growth in the revenue produced by Measure S. Thanks so much.
The next speaker is Bernie Truax, to be followed by Richard Beck.
Good morning.
Good morning, Bernie.
Yeah, thank you for having us all. I want to thank the city, the council members, our mayor, and the staff for this great city that we have, and it's hard sometimes to come up here and focus on the little bit that we don't have when we have so much. But, that being said, I'm hard-pressed to understand the lack of a larger commitment on the things that actually produce the income and produce more tax dollars through property taxes, sales taxes, and bed taxes. I believe that we all know we have a great little jewel down here called Old Town, and many of these council members are the ones who first envisioned it, and, you know, I remember walking streets with Jeff Comencaro and the Old Town merchants that weren't very many complaining about the sidewalks being closed, but they're now open and we're busy, and we actually have things that are success problems. One of the ones we hear the most about is parking. The other one that we hear about is the nightlife is getting a little out of hand and maybe could use some further police patrolling. But I see Old Town, obviously, as the beginning, not, not finished, just the beginning of what's coming. Our company has made a considerable investment, a new hotel, the center out in front of City Hall, which is Marketplace, that, by the way, the good news is, is totally pre-leased and will open full, hopefully on the same day we get the hotel, so there'll be one big party downtown on two grand openings. But those things, you know, not only take advantage of the great city that we have, but they bring back money and they bring back the tax dollars that our tourists and the information on Temecula Valley count on. And so, I'd like to see that capital improvement budget planned a little deeper on that. Let's put back the money that's coming from the tourists who come here into bringing more tourists here and making their stay very pleasant. Thank you for giving me some time.
Thank you, Bernie.
The next speaker is Richard Beck, to be followed by Ken Westmeyer.
Good morning, Richard.
Good morning. I'd like to thank the mayor, council, staff, for all the hard work you guys have put into in making Temecula the great city that it is. My background, I've been in the valley since nineteen sixty-nine, and my family has personally invested millions of dollars into Temecula in the last few years to take and improve a lot of the buildings that are in Temecula. I want to first address you as a member of the Old Town Property Owners Association. Couple issues, parking. We really would like to see a parking structure put into the budget. We know it can't be done in one year, but you know, if money can be set aside each year, that really would help. I'd like to thank you for the street improvements now that are happening on Fifth Street, and we look forward to seeing the rest of the streets in Old Town addressed. And then, being in Old Town, operating the Hotel Temecula, we're here many nights, we spend the night in the hotel, we walk the streets at various times of the day and night, and in particular, from midnight to two AM, there's a lot of people that come into Old Town. They don't even come in until after midnight, and it's, there's a lot of noise, a lot of drunks. I'm hoping that the city can set aside a dedicated officer who can take and be in Old Town late at night. I mean, I've personally have witnessed some pretty bad things happening. By the time you call for dispatch and have an officer arrive, you know, the, the people are gone, they've left, you know, something's happened, and, and it really would help to have a, a beat officer down here. I would like specifically too, to address, as the owning and operating the Hotel Temecula, we made a commitment to the city when we purchased the property in two thousand fourteen that we'd restore the hotel and all the buildings on the property and open the hotel. We've done that. We are getting the highest reviews of any hotel in the Temecula Valley. People are coming from around the world and are just absolutely amazed at the history that we have here. There are several things we asked the city for assistance on in the very beginning. One is, we've asked the city to adopt the Mills Act. I know that the fiscal impact is minimal, I think I addressed the, the council with this a few months ago. If the city can somewhere incorporate that in their budget, it's, it's minor. In fact, the, the TOT tax at the hotel is generating more than would offset the cost of any relief under the Mills Act. We'd like to see the undergrounding of the power poles on Main Street, that's already been, that was approved years ago when the power poles were removed here. That's something that if the money was advanced, Edison collects a fee for undergrounding all those, so if the city even advanced some of that money, maybe we can get some, some of that done. And the last thing is, on Third Street, we have a, a dead end there. It impacts the, the people even going down Third Street. In fact, when the warehouse was built, that ground floor of that building has been empty from day one because cars start to turn down the street, they see the dead end, and they turn, and they keep going on. So, maybe if the city, again, can incorporate some funds to address that dead end. And again, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
And the last speaker is Ken Westmeyer.
Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you for having us, again, past Chairman for VTV, seems like we're...
Seems like we're getting a little podium time today. As everybody's kind of pointed out, tourism is a huge business in Temecula. The fact that you guys are embracing that and helping guide the process is an amazing thing. We've been involved in hospitality in quite a few different communities and to see the support and dire need to move tourism forward by city staff is amazing to us. As part of V T V, we are trying to get a larger master plan for tourism together. As everybody's kind of pointed out, there's different entities in the city where everybody goes to visit, to have all those entities speaking to each other. The county, which Wine Country is in, is kind of a focus for us moving forward. So, really quickly, we would like to work with you guys, work with everybody in the community to develop that master plan, come back, display it, talk to you guys about it, get some feedback. So, just want to lay that seed, not asking for any money yet, yet. Thank you very much for your guys' time.
Thank you. Okay, I made a note, tourism master plan. All right. Any more, Randy? That is it. So, we had some items, I've got mics, I see your hand, Mike, that we probably want to address.
Are we ready?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. Thanks to all the speakers that are here today and some of the things that were brought up. I'm going to address some things, not necessarily in order, but I think I'll cover some of the salient items that came up. Old Town and Old Town parking. We go back 15 years and I tell the story whenever I get a chance because so many people are new and don't remember that literally Old Town used to shut down at 3:00.
Mike, you need to put your mic closer. Mike, 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 there you go.
Is that better?
Yeah, he can turn you down now and not get any feedback, so that's better.
Okay, thank you. Used to be about 15 years ago, in fact, in 1997, the city put together a plan to roll down using Kaiser Marsh. That feedback's not because of me, it's, I think it's getting picked up by the speaker. Jonathan, can you take care of that?
Yeah.
Okay. So, we did a Kaiser Marsh report and sort of did our wish list for Old Town and what we'd like to see, but back in that day, Old Town was a ghost town, mostly it was the sale of antiques. Literally, those stores would close at 3:00 in the afternoon on most days and on weekends they hardly would be open at all. Sometimes they'd open till noon, but they'd close and no joke, on a Sunday afternoon, you'd literally would see tumbleweeds, you know, going down, going down Old Town Front Street. So, we had a plan and we put it together and, you know, if anybody really wants to have a joke or a laugh, maybe you pull the tapes or the minutes of those meetings where you have council members and planning commissioners talking about how we wish we had traffic problems in Old Town and how we wish we had a parking problem in Old Town. And in fact, one of the strategies that we used in Old Town was we removed the parking requirements, which was a hindrance to development in Old Town. That immediately made a number of projects viable and then we injected a lot of redevelopment money into Old Town to begin to get housing here, affordable housing, which also brought some other things, ground for retail and things of that nature and voila, you see the success of an implemented plan today. I can buy into the fact that we don't rest on our laurels. We certainly have to take it to the next evolution. So, I hear a theme that keeps coming up as it relates to parking. Definitely, we need to address parking. I'm hearing it from many sectors, you know, I'm hearing it from a lot of young people who live in town. Just the other day, somebody was telling me, you know, we'd like to go grab a quick sandwich at the Cuban restaurant, I forgot what it's called, but really just kind of getting in and out of there to get a sandwich to go, it's kind of difficult. You have to, there's no parking, you have to park in the garage, you got to walk two blocks, walk two blocks back, a little difficult. Of course, Old Town was built and designed for walking. I think we just need to make it a little bit more convenient. Problem is, when you look at the cost of parking garages, the one that we have here as part of the civic center, I believe, costs us 17 million dollars and we paid for that with redevelopment money. The parking garage at the mall, let's see, was that 11 million dollars?
It was 22 million and our contribution was 11.
11 million dollars. And I say these things so you can get an idea of the cost, of the magnitude of the cost of these things. And so, we use redevelopment dollars again with the mall and they put in the other half. So, these things cost a lot, so we have to get a little bit more creative. Now, I sit on the Old Town Subcommittee with Mayor Pro Tem Ron and we're going to be convening a meeting here pretty soon, probably in July at some point, we're going to start looking at some of these things. I've asked for some of our financial people to come. I've asked for a gentleman by the name of David Tazig to attend and we've also asked for our bond counsel, Paul Timig, to be there. And there's a lot of strategies that we need to implement as it relates to wanting to get more parking garages. Simply said, I mean, there's not a spare 11 million dollars, or rather, just figure, 17 million for what we already have here. I don't know if the cost has gone up or down, but let's just say it's still 17 million. There's not 17 million dollars out there that to spend. Obviously, we can start socking money away, then if we socked away a million dollars a year, well, you do the math, well, nobody wants to wait 17 years. So, we have to get a little creative and there are ways to do that. I really want to study infrastructure financing districts, which is a, is an old form of redevelopment, but it would require all the property owners in Old Town to agree to that district and which would literally freeze their property taxes. And any increase in those property taxes that would happen naturally would then stay local, but you have to vote to do that, just like redevelopment operated. Then, of course, since any increase stays local, it can be bonded against and just like redevelopment bonds. And then, then we can go ahead and borrow the money and build these structures and pay for it with increased tax increment. I know I've said a mouthful and it may not be clear to everybody because redevelopment law or infrastructure financing law is not necessarily easy to understand, but that's kind of, that's kind of the 101 version there. So, we're going to work on that. I've heard from many people and I think that it's important we start to look at it. The young, the gentleman mentioned park diff fees to go to pay for the teen village.
Yeah.
You know, it's important to understand that the teen village wasn't a whimsical concept. It's, we've been carrying this over now for, I think, six, seven years at least. And it's something that the community itself identified in the youth master plan and it's important that everybody knows, I enjoy when a speaker comes up and speaks on that and because we're here, we might have more institutional knowledge that maybe some speakers don't have. And so, certainly you can say, sure, pay for it with diff fees, but that's very difficult. Right now, we're supplementing out of our general fund, what is it, Kevin, about 6, 7 million dollars now or is it 5?
5.
You're talking about the general fund subsidy to the community service district?
Exactly.
It's on the order of 6 million a year.
So, it's important to note that our general fund supports our community services fund by the tune of about 6 million dollars. And what does that mean? Think about it for a moment. A park is not an asset that generates revenue. It's purely to be enjoyed by the community. And so, every park out there, you don't pay a fee to use it. Same thing with the library or same thing with the children's museum or the theater for the most part. Most of these things that the community enjoys, they're provided to the community either for free or at a discount rate, as it should be, but just to let everybody know that there's costs involved in that. And so, when we did the youth master plan, that was a monumental task in which hundreds and may I say, a couple of thousand people participated in that over the course of four or five months and identified these priorities. So, where to put it and finding a good place to put it, those were all kind of settled years ago. And correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Comentaro, because I know you've been leading that angle on that and having arrived at Ronald Reagan Sports Park, it seemed that the CRC there seemed to be the most logical place. My next comment as it relates to tourism. One of, when we, just state for the record, the city council didn't raise anybody's taxes. I think everybody here knows that. All the city council did was, was put on the ballot a measure to see if people wanted to raise their taxes via Measure S to do a number of things. And obviously, everybody knows it passed. One of the arguments that I was making at the time and I still make it as it relates to tourism is that we were receiving a lot of impacts from tourism, but none of the benefits. Let me qualify that. All your restaurant owners here were receiving the benefits, stores were receiving the benefits, some of the tourism industry were receiving the benefits, but the city itself, other than providing more employment for our residents, really doesn't receive benefits from the tourism industry. In fact, quite the opposite occurs. Our roads are taxed, our police department is taxed, and I mean taxed meaning utilized, used, used more than it would be if the tourism industry wasn't there. And so, Measure S was a mechanism for us to say, hey, you know, we need to recapture some of these dollars so that we can maintain our roads, roads that are being impacted by the 750 million dollar tourism industry that is benefiting everybody else. So, we were having a deficit because of tourism. So, we're glad it passed. That means that a lot of Measure S money is going into doing what it should do and that is, first, taking care of the roads that have been impacted by this fantastic tourism That's about it. One last closing thought regarding Old Town. Council member, Mayor Pro Tem Ron and myself are going to convene an Old Town ad hoc Subcommittee in July at some point. As I said, we'll have some infrastructure strategies, we're really going to dive into it. I've heard from several people who have a lot of interest in Old Town and want to see things done differently, want to move Old Town to the next level, which I think is appropriate and we'll continue to listen to that and if there's any other ideas before then, please send them our way. But we'll have a very fruitful, very robust meeting when we talk about Old Town in July.
Jeff.
Thank you, Jeff. Madam Mayor, and thank you, Mike, for getting in my head and taking all my comments.
I know.
And I agree with you, by the way, so good comments. This discussion this morning reminds me a lot of a similar one that we had back in 1998 when Carl Lindemann's, the late Carl Lindemann's, who was a CPA, determined that he wanted to delve into the C I P and find monies that maybe were programmed too far out or for whatever reason could be reprogrammed and he found 8 million dollars. It wasn't lost, it just needed to get reprogrammed and frankly, he was right. And we had this meeting that later reporter for The Californian at the time, John Hunneman, referred to it as the Brujaha in Temecula and it was, became this famous meeting.
I remember.
And we had this fight amongst the five of us on the council as to how we were going to spend this 8 million dollars and it was a knock-down, drag-out fight. And all of us scratched our heads afterward and said, my goodness, what a wonderful problem to have. And it reminds me of that here today while our budget is, has been relieved of certain dire consequences down the road by Measure S, it's not a blank check and certainly we have to allocate those funds in a way that makes sense given the priorities that we have. Over the last few years, we've had requests from our citizens for just about everything you could think of, including Olympic swimming and diving complexes, more affordable housing, homeless shelter, more arts and culture. Thank you, Mr. Foster, I think your ideas are great. And so, you know, what do we do? So, we have public meetings and we prioritize how best to spend the resources that we have. It's a great problem and we should all be very thankful to the citizens of Temecula for creating this problem for us because it's a great thing. Just one comment on the parking garage in Old Town. Several commented on the fact that there isn't construction funding in the capital improvement project. We've got to make sure there's a logical priority to what we're doing in a logical order. We are going to approve, I assume, I shouldn't assume, a million dollars for the beginning of that work for the studies. Previous studies have shown that although parking was starting to become difficult, it was not a problem if you just take the number of spots available in Old Town and the need. But that was several years ago and certainly things have changed in Old Town and so we need to do that work on the front end. We can't put money in the C I P for construction when we don't know what we're going to construct. And so, that will come eventually and C I Ps are rolled over every year, even though it's a five-year program. And so, next year, we'll sit here again and we'll determine what to do with the funds we have available. Certainly, that may be a time based on the results of the study and other needs that will put money into the C I P for construction. I would like to say a word about the teen village. It certainly is very near and dear to my heart, so forgive me if I'm a little bit biased, but you know, we talked a lot about Old Town this morning and I think it was Bernie who said, you know, we all know we have a jewel in Old Town and we do, we do know that and it is a jewel. But we have a lot of jewels in the city and we have a lot of competing interests and everything has to be balanced. And we determined a number of years ago that while from a community services perspective, frankly, we do a wonderful job with many segments, most segments of our population. We do a woeful job with our teen population. And how do we rectify that? And so, the teen village concept was born out of that. It's our charge as leaders of the community to make sure we consider every demographic in the city and sometimes that means a little bit of headbutting. It's going to happen and it's inevitable and we just have to balance it the way we see fit. Speaker who asked question about the teen village asked about, you know, why couldn't we put the money into after-school programs and the like? We do have after-school programs and also we have an active Boys and Girls Club that does an awful lot with after-school programs and the like. So, many of those services are available. The question is, what do we need now? What's the next step? Just a quick word too about, some people raised the issue of we should be investing our citizens' money into the business or not the business community, but those things that make the business community more robust and so that we generate additional revenue from the investment that we make. And Mike alluded to it a little bit. Lot of us have spent most of our lives in the private business community and we understand the concept of bottom line and the profit motive and that's the way private business runs. While we often say we'd like to see the city run more like a private business and I think we do that here to a large degree, we don't work with a profit motive. We work with a motive that really is more in tune with how can we create and foster the most good for our citizens in terms of their quality of life. And the payoff for that is that quality of life. It's not dollars and cents on the bottom line. And so, often we invest our dollars or your dollars into parks and theaters and things that although in the case of theater generate a little bit of revenue, doesn't come close to paying the cost of operating the facility. It's a benefit to the residents of Temecula and that's why we take a hard look at investing those funds in quality of life. Again, that's the payoff at the end of the day. So, it's very difficult to make the comparison between private side generating dollars and the public side generating quality of life. Those are really two very different things. So, with that, that's all I have. I would like to thank Aaron and Jennifer and everybody else and all your staffs. When we have these budget workshops, it's always a great source of pride, even in the last couple of years when we knew there were challenges. Still, the quality of work that comes out of this team is remarkable and continues to be remarkable, so we all thank you for that. And last but certainly not least, thanks to the citizens of Temecula for creating this horrible problem that we have called Measure S. So, appreciate that. Thank you, Madam.
Stu.
Okay, well, I want to talk a little bit about...
Okay, well, I want to talk a little bit about the history of Temecula. And I went down this last Saturday and had dinner down in Old Town. And I decided to take a walk to take a look at the lot that we're purchasing. And as I'm down there, I see there were people coming in and out of the Temecula Hotel. And so, I thought, I told my wife, I says, hey, there's, they're open. I'm going to go see if I can see inside. And so, just as I was walking up, the owner, Richard there, was coming out of the hotel. So, he graciously gave us a tour of the hotel.
Is that your first tour?
First tour.
Oh, my gosh.
And it was spectacular. I mean, that hotel, talk about the history of Temecula. It's all inside that hotel. I mean, I was just blown away. So, going back to the whole Mills Act thing, I think we really do need to consider adopting the Mills Act because to, to maintain a building like that, you, you know old buildings. I, I've had old houses in the past, and things break all the time. And if, if it's something that we can do to show our appreciation for them preserving the history of Temecula like that, I think we need to do it. So, you know, and he, he basically ran me through some of the other points that he also made here today, and all valid points. So, I really do think we need to consider his comments as far as that cul-de-sac and those underground power poles. I mean, it, it really is unsightly when you're standing there looking out. And, and we've got some, you know, city property right there, too, that all these power poles are basically strung across all of our properties, too. So, I think we should also consider doing that. And I'm, I'm definitely in favor of more parking in Old Town, too, because I really think that can be and will be a hindrance going forward. Because we do have to plan for the future. And the future is, we want that to thrive even more. And parking is, is going to make that happen, so.
Thank you, Stu. Matt?
All right. Well, let me start a little different conversation than what we've been having, and then we'll loop back to some of the other. I have a list of 12 things here, so bear with me. But number one, I think when, when we were talking about the budget last year and the year prior to that, our, our big issues were rising costs and public safety. And one of the things that was said at that time was, you know, in five years or less, we're going to be in, you know, a very difficult position and have to make some hard decisions. And, you know, there was sort of this reference, I think it was a really unfortunate reference I made to this being a very slowly moving Titanic. So, sorry about that. In hindsight, not the most clever thing I could have said. But the good news was, we started steering the ship really early, right? And we don't have to be in a position, having the tough conversations this year that we likely would have about program, you know, cutting programs. But going back to a lot of those conversations, a big focus at that time, again, was public safety. And arguably, I would say that public safety is sort of the number-one responsibility we have as a city. And so, one of the things I'd like us to sort of reevaluate in our budget for this year is the opening of Station 95. I know that we're slating the opening for three years out. But, you know, we've, we've looked at the numbers, we've done the analysis. I've spent quite a bit of time sort of trying to understand this issue because certainly, we don't need to open something that's not necessary just for the sake of opening it. But, you know, part of the commitment we, we made was a strong commitment to public safety. And part of the conversation we had during the entirety of, of Measure S was police and fire, and in particular, adding more officers to the city to bring our ratio to where it needs to be. We've successfully done that. But then, part of that conversation was Station 95. Arguably, I think the city and that section of Roropah is at a place now with volume of calls and numbers of incidents that are occurring, both medical aid and others, where 95 would be of a huge benefit to our city and help relieve a lot of the pressure from surrounding stations and allow them to focus on their service area a little bit more significantly. So, I know we've talked about this in the past, and so I'd like to first start the dialogue here on my list of 12 to address Station 95.
Okay, I've got that one.
Okay. You want to have that conversation now? Just, just as background for, for the council, I think they know this, but for the community, Station 95 is located in Roropah. That was developer-built. It is not currently operational. However, the area response surrounding Roropah is, including the Panhandle portion where there are residents now existing, is being served by four fire stations, two in the city, two in the county. So, there isn't a void of fire protection in that area. The reasons and the rationale behind having that station programmed out a bit, and I believe there's some latitude in, in the operating memorandum for the Roropah Ranch, originally tied that to about the 515th building permit. We've issued 500 permits in the Roropah area. So, so we haven't quite hit that threshold. I totally respect everything that Mayor Pro Tem Ron, you're saying. It, it's an investment, and we can absolutely talk about that. And we're looking forward to the discussion and direction from the council today. Should we choose to move the opening of that station up in years? It will require adjustments and, and things that you, you saw today. And, and we can make those adjustments. It's about a $2 million a year investment to operate four-person staffing at Station 95. The fire chief can, can expand on this further. Probably need about six months lead time to, to staff that. So, if the proposal is to open that in the next fiscal year, we need to identify, obviously, a million dollars in '17, '18, $2 million thereafter. As you stated, we have plugged a $2 million expenditure in, but beginning in July 1 of 2020. That is when we believe, or we forecast, the development will be occurring in the Pan portion. And that would warrant sort of additional and greater levels of fire service. So, definitely looking for, for a direction from the city council today on, on how you feel about that and how best to, to proceed.
Well, I certainly think we can take a look at it, put the numbers all together, look at the current plan, and then you can bring it to a council meeting, and we can discuss it.
Did you say it was going to be a two-person staffing?
No, this-
Four.
Four-person staffing. It's nine individuals to staff around the clock. So, so that equates to about $2 million a year. If, Madam Mayor, if, if we can have a little bit of that discussion today, I mean, that, that would be very helpful for, for, before we finalize the budget.
Okay, so you're looking at, at $2 million in personnel, and what about equipment?
The, the equipment's already been purchased.
Okay, so equipment's ready. Matt, what were you thinking?
Well, you know, I mean, it's a six-month lead time, so, you know, plus or minus, let's give a little bit of flexibility in that. You know, if we're into June here, starting tomorrow, you know, I think we need to consider having this open by January of, of next year. I think the threshold of housing, you know, 500 houses or, you know, building permits versus 515, I think that's, you know, we're there. I think the threshold has been met, arguably. Waiting for 15 more, you know, permits to be pulled, I don't think is, is reasonable. And, you know, the station's been sitting vacant for a long time. And I think we just need to, we just need to open the, you know, doors on that and, and, you know, get it running. So, if we can program, you know, find the, the funding, and I know, Aaron, we've talked a little bit about this already, find the funding for the million dollars for, you know, the first year of opening and, and two million after that. I know it's accelerating the schedule. And I know that, you know, it may have some implications with regard to CIP and other things. But, you know, again, going back to the priorities of what Measure S is about, I think it's, should be, you know, a top priority for us to have this open immediately.
I got a question.
Okay, go ahead, Stu.
So, are most of these calls in that area or in that service area, is it medical? Or is there?
Yes.
Yeah, I'll, I'll just start, Chief, and you jump in. But I think it's fair to state that probably close to 80, 83% of all the calls from every station in the city limits are medical aid calls. There isn't a high degree of structure fires that we're responding to here. So, 80%, and I think that would be fair to characterize that as the statistics. We went back 18 months and looked at calls for service. I think I'd shared under separate cover with the city council. And I think that would hold true for, for the Roropah area. Chief, would you concur? Medical aid?
It's all about 80% for medical calls.
So, is there, is there a possibility of like a, a smaller staffing that would just deal with just strictly medical aid stuff rather than go full, full bore fire station? Is there a way we could just turn it into a, a medical aid-type station where we could staff it with less staff? Like a soft opening of a business or something, you know? So, you have a, a chance to get it up and running, see how it's, how it's working before we commit full bore?
Yeah, I, I think all those options are on the table and available. A QRV, I believe it's a quick response vehicle, typical medical aid, you know, running medics out of there. I think we've costed that as well. You will achieve some savings going down that path. But I don't believe it to be super significant. Because a fire station is an eight-to-five. It's, it's around the clock, seven days a week. So, instead of $2 million a year, if you're just running a medic unit out of there, you know, you, you might still be looking at about 1.5, 1.2, I would say, a year.
So, let me ask this question. Are we making our response times now?
Currently, we're making our zero-to-five 60% of the time out there.
Okay. And how many stations are covering that area? They're sharing the load?
Most of the loads being shared between the French Valley Station and Station 84.
Okay. Ooh, really? All right. So, 60% of the time, we're making our zero to, within, we're there within five minutes? And if we're that other 20%, how much over? And it, it is the late factor or more than five-minute factor due to the fact that they're so busy answering other calls, that they're not available? Or is it distance and traffic, or do we know?
All, all those factors play into it.
All those things.
84 is out, then they have to go to the next closest facility. And then, traffic does play into it. So, all, all those factors play into why we're only meeting the 60% out there.
Right. So, I know there's probably no city policy that says if we, you know, are meet at a certain threshold, like 60%.
Well, that is, I mean, that, that is obviously the goal. And I think it is important to note that, yes, if, if the decision is made to open that station, the response times within that area are, are obviously going to go way down. And, and the other thing that we need to acknowledge is that when we're responding to that area from Station 84 on Pabba, we're taking them out of their current coverage-
Way out.
-as well. So, that coupled with evaluating, you know, the thoroughfare and the Knox box for, for fire response vehicles to that area is, is something that we definitely need to look at and something we've already talked about, bringing to the Traffic Safety Commission.
Have we looked at the developers' houses that are in process? You know, I know they're building in smaller phases now because they don't want to get caught with so many houses under construction, but so is our 2020 estimate.
It's, it's truly an estimate. I don't, I think we don't know when they're going to be in pulling permits. They're in for a specific plan amendment.
That's good.
And our best forecast, if they're moving fairly quick, would be, you, you could see additional building permits being pulled in anywhere between 24 and 36 months, which has driven sort of our timeline of programming.
Well, and gentlemen, the decision is, are we taxing 84? We're certainly taking 84 out of its area anytime they have to go all the way out to Roropah, because that is a distance-
Well, and others, too, right? 12.
Yeah.
I mean, most of our stations are having to cover. Yeah.
Overall, it, it taxes the overall system. Because if 84 is gone, then somebody's got to fill in behind them.
Can I, can I interject one other in this discussion? Chief, obviously, we can consider any levels of staffing at this station. Would, would 3-0 staffing at Roropah, given the calls for service you seen, would that be a detriment to that area in this interim period? Or, and you, and we might as well just go 4-0, or would that be something that, that we could consider? Just throwing it out there.
I, I would prefer if we stayed with the 4-0, but I would recommend no less than a three-person staffed engine.
So, how much would that save us, Aaron?
Jennifer, I'm going to guess $400,000 a year.
Don't make me yell your name out, Ms. Anderson. So, we've had a good three years. Let me, let me go into that conversation we had, I think, in our first budget meeting on 3-0 versus 4-0 staffing. And, and, you know, NFPA standards actually set, you know, 4-0 is sort of the minimal acceptable standard. While state and county engines are, are rolling with three-person, it's definitely not the, the national acceptable level for, for fire. And I'll just say two quick things. As one, you know, 60%, you know, meeting acceptable response times or that zero-to-five-minute response time, you know, as a professor, 60% is just barely passing. And, you know, a three-person versus four-person, you know, model, while not the, certainly not the national accepted standard, has a significant impact on not just response times, but overall crew efficiencies, depending on the incident, let alone the structure fire response as well with the two-in, two-out model. That's, that's sort of the, the standard in the industry. So, you know, if we're going to do it, do it all the way. I don't think our community deserves a D, you know, level of service in, in Roropah. And, you know, I think part of why we passed Measure S in the first place was to address the, the idea that Temecula doesn't deserve to slide into a mediocrity and, and, you know, anything but, in, in my mind, a four-person-staffed, you know, engine house with an opening in January is, is allowing us to do just that.
Well, I, I would not say that we've, you know, we've ventured into mediocrity at this point. I mean, I think we've planned ahead responsibly in addressing the fire station the same way that we always would as it, you know, applies to the occupancy permits. I don't know. What's the council? Mike?
Couple of thoughts. I, I agree with Councilmember Ron, but with a asterisk.
Okay.
Couple of things cross my mind. Maybe we can see a matrix of how things would have to be moved around. In other words, where you, you would find the money? What CIP projects would have to have money removed in order to make it happen? So, let's look at that. Another thing I'd want to at least get some feedback on is, you know, we're in, what are we, in the end of May? So, we've had two months' worth of Measure S revenue. Have we gotten an April report on Measure S yet? So, so we don't really even, I mean, it's not seasoned yet to see just exactly, you know, is it going to meet our 23, 24 million dollar per year projections? Is it going to be 20? You just don't know. And so, we've also gone gangbusters on assuming that there's going to be a certain amount of money. And in doing that, we've, we've ordered a, a whole bunch of road maintenance, which was due anyway, but we're anticipating the Measure S revenue. So, I think all of those considered, I think after we look at it and shuffle the cards, I think there's probably a, a way to get done what council or Mayor Pro Tem Ron wants to get done. But I think we, we need to look at it and just sort of make an intelligent decision.
We can, I, I can, I can speak to a couple of options that could be considered, you know, in terms of moving that opening way up. One of which includes sort of the removal of the photovoltaic system option that was assigned, that they were considering for the Temecula Public Library. We're not completely convinced that the return on our investment on that, as we bid that out, should be something that we really want to go down.
How much is that, Aaron?
That's $613,000.
Okay.
If we are to move up the six-month cost of that, you know, we're, we're basically attempting to free up about $868,000. we're, we're basically attempting to free up about eight hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars in next year. Um, so, so right there, you almost, you almost get there. And we'd probably propose, you, we use some of our fund balance to sort of close that gap to, uh, in, to the tune of, uh, two hundred, two hundred and fifty thousand, let's say. Um, in fiscal year eighteen nineteen, um, we might recommend reducing pavement rehab by a million dollars. And, and again, utilizing some fund balance, uh, to close that. Um, we can also consider, uh, not that additional payoff to the unfunded liability to the tune of seven hundred and fifty thousand. So these would be some of the, uh, my recommendations, if that's the direction we wanna go. We can, if, if that's the will of the council, we'll put this together, basically making the assumption, the library parking, photovoltaic systems out, general fund balance closes the gap for seventeen eighteen. Uh, we reduce pavement rehab by a million dollars in eighteen nineteen and nineteen twenty. Then we're back on the, um, schedule that we had originally presented to all of you for fiscal year twenty twenty-one, uh, absorbing that two million dollars a year. So that, that would be, if that's acceptable and that's the direction, we, we could make that work.
You said library parking.
The library parking project has the library parking component.
Right.
But we also did an alternate bid, um, to cost out a PV system solar, um, over that parking.
Okay, okay, that's what I got then. That's a six thirteen.
But we have some other things in the works that will hopefully drive down the electrical costs associated with that facility. And again, like I said, we're not convinced the PV system has a, a ROI that would be acceptable for that amount of money. And if not, that's programmed, we, we unfund that and that goes towards the fire station year one.
So looking even at those funding sources, you're still talking about a two thousand twenty opening?
No. No, that, that, what I just described was a shuffling and defunding would allow us to open Fire Station Ninety-five in January of eighteen.
Okay.
And so what pavement rehab would have to be put on hold?
That would be in the subsequent fiscal year. We're gonna, we're gonna make a considerable investment in pavement rehab to the tune of, you know, five, six million dollars a year. We're utilizing S funds, we're utilizing TOMF, or DEF, excuse me.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but we would just have to reduce that, that investment by a million dollars to, to accommodate the operation costs of the fire station.
But we'd still be able to accelerate the pavement rehab?
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not, it's not that we're not gonna be investing in pavement rehab in our out years. It'll just be reduced by a million dollars.
Okay. So we're still increasing it over what it is now?
Yes. With, with the passage of Measure S, we've been afforded an opportunity to reinvest in our road network, get caught up, as we described today, on, on the areas that we've had to neglect. And so it's a pretty, it's a very aggressive pavement management program going forward. The, the results of the studies are gonna be very indicative of, of where we need to focus our future dollars. And, and that we don't have today, cause we just started that and it was approved at mid-year. So as we sit here next year, we'll have the results of that study and we'll be strategically prioritizing based on Pat Thomas's and the consultant's recommendations on where we need to funnel those, those dollars.
Okay. Um, Stu, did you wanna add something?
Yeah. So going forward, as we get, uh, Measure S dollars in, and if, if it's more than we expected, we can then continue the pavement program as we.
Oh, absolutely.
Haven't written yet.
You know, and, and, and this, and we, we'll come to the city council not just once a year, but we come at mid-year, you know, and we sort of evaluate our revenue, we evaluate our expenditures. And if, if, if a year from now, you know, this, this new revenue source is trending higher than projected, we're gonna come to you and we're gonna say, hey, we, we recommend pledging X towards, you know, roads or backfilling in a, in a different area, or an old town parking garage, or, you know, whatever the priorities become. Um, we're definitely in a position, and the council's in a position to redirect that.
And in the case that it funds less than we anticipated?
Then we adjust accordingly as well.
We adjust accordingly, and it's still more than we were doing before.
It's difficult to adjust ongoing operation costs. It's more, it's easier to adjust one-time capital costs.
Sure. Because you have to account for inflation and the increase, increasing costs. And then we're still looking at police and fire contracts that, you know, vary.
And we've, we've, we believe we've conservatively built in those escalators in police and fire, which by the way are very, um, steep over the next sixty months.
Mm-hmm.
But we've, we've showed you that, that we're prepared to, uh, absorb those costs to those high levels of, of service, uh, both police and fire.
Well, it was anticipating things just like this, and increase in police and fire costs that really drove Measure S. And so we will continue to always put public safety first. And I think what I'm hearing from the council then is that, um, let's go ahead and take a look. And you've already given me at least two, maybe three funding sources. So let's take a look and see how it would impact those line items and how we'll restructure to cover those in consecutive years.
We will, we will repackage, um, that based on that priority in that direction. So the amended budget that comes forward to the city council on June thirteenth will have, uh, what I'm hearing is six months of operational cost for Station Ninety-five, beginning opening in January. Um, and we'll, um, be prepared to talk about sort of the, how we had to move the monies around and how we tend to, uh, uh, fund that.
Okay. And is it, is there any reason we can't contact the developers and see what their, you know, most recent, um, sales were? And if they anticipate moving their schedules up or the number of homes that are gonna be built in the next year or so?
We do that annually when we prepare our revenue projections. Luke's, Luke's team works closely with the various developers. Uh, for the most part, the residential development, there's very limited opportunity. We're focusing more on Roarpa Ranch out in that area.
Mm-hmm.
And the schedule that we had originally placed was kind of in line with when we anticipated development in that area coming forward.
Okay. So we think we're up to speed on that. Well, then the consensus of the council is to, let's take a look at these and, and, uh, see how it's gonna impact the other programs and how we'll play catch-up in the, the consecutive couple of years. So is that okay with you, Dr. Ron? All right.
Mayor Pro-Tem Ron, that was one of twelve, right?
Yeah. So number two.
Okay. I don't know if I have anything left to, uh.
Sorry. So I was on an airplane coming back from DC, back and forth last week.
You've gotta start taking shorter trips.
So I had like fourteen hours to, to read this stuff.
Shorter trips.
Number two, actually, we, we, we've talked about it quite a bit. It's the, uh, old town parking issue. I think, you know, you guys have done a good job of reprogramming some funds to, uh, look at the planning and, and development of, of that. Um, I think Mike and I, we've got our work cut out for us at the next, uh, meeting later this summer. I expect, uh, you know, all the folks who are here today, uh, don't leave yet, Bernie. Um, I expect all the folks here today who've, who've, you know, mentioned this issue, uh, to, uh, be at those meetings so we can, you know, come up with, uh, some, some great, uh, solutions that'll, that'll help alleviate that issue. So, uh, so, you know, we've addressed that issue. So number three, um, you know, uh, Mr. Foster, is he still here? There you are. Hey, uh, nice to see you again. Thanks for the, uh, the comments. Um, Bernie, I know you're, uh, deeply involved in the Temecula Valley Symphony along with Conversations. And, and Daniel, I know you are as well, uh, regarding, uh, the formation of another arts council. Um, you know, you couldn't have more support from, from, I think, this, uh, city council and myself.
Yes.
Uh, as well. Think it's a fantastic idea. One of the things that I've talked about with, uh, Mr. Hawkins and, and staff is, uh, helping to support some of our existing organizations, including the, uh, Temecula Valley Symphony. Um, and I know we programmed some funds for them, um, to do, you know, some of the concert series that we have in front of City Hall here. Um, and one of the, uh, one of the biggest challenges, uh, and, and Bernie, I know you know this well, one of their biggest challenges is simply just their ability to, um, uh, attract enough folks and get the messaging out there and their communications. Um, and so, you know, I've talked to, uh, to staff about that issue. Uh, and one of the things I'd like to bring back to the table, um, is, is actually just a very small reprogramming of funds. Um, but it's gonna be contingent on something, you know? One of the things that was mentioned earlier was this concept, and, and Aaron, I think you used this term, leveraged investments. Um, I think it's very important to recognize that the city has, you know, an obligation to help the arts and, and music culture, um, grow here, but so does the community itself. And so one of the things I'd like to propose is, um, that the city, uh, increases its annual, uh, uh, investment in our, our Temecula Valley Symphony to the tune of, uh, twenty-five thousand dollars, uh, for the next fiscal year, contingent on you folks, Mr. Truax and others, raising the in-kind twenty-five thousand dollars.
Matching funds?
Absolutely.
I like it.
Um, and, and, and the reason is, is because I'd like to see this come out as, as sort of a pilot that says, you know, these are our public-private partnerships. We talk about this a lot. Um, and I think, you know, here's an opportunity, you know, we're not gonna underwrite the entire, uh, program and we're not gonna underwrite the entire, you know, arts council. And we need that investment in our community and our business leaders and others to, uh, really build philanthropy in our, our city. And I think this is a great opportunity to, uh, start that dialogue. So if, if you're willing, folks, um, I'd like to, uh, see if maybe we can reprogram some of our, uh, funds for this next fiscal year to do just that.
This sounds like a very ridiculous question, but having experience with nonprofits, are they prepared? You know, they've probably got their schedule already booked all the way through this year.
They're working on it.
And maybe the, next year. So are they prepared to spend an extra twenty-five thousand dollars?
Yes.
In Temecula?
And we've, we've met with, yes, we've met with the, uh, um, uh, members of their board as well as, uh, the, uh, John Mario, their conductor. Um, and, uh, you know, there's, there's a lot of details that need to get figured out here. But, you know, just as a, as a first sort of shot across the bow in, in this investment, I think it's, uh, it's a nice way to, uh, sort of kickstart some of this, uh, dialogue and hopefully build a more, um, I think, robust conversation within our community about this, uh, issue.
Well, I think that's great. And of course, of course, I support the arts and culture as a musician. Typically, they would come to us with a program in mind and request the additional funding. I hate to just put the funding out there and then say, here, just, you know, go and spend it. Um, perhaps we could get together with them and get a more concrete idea about where, cause it has to be, it has to be spent in Temecula, for Temecula residents.
And, and we've, we've had those conversations with them already about, you know, reprogramming and providing additional benefits to the city, uh, through community services that go beyond just the simple concert series. So, you know, uh, educational programs for youth, um, and senior community and others. So, I mean, so there's a lot of things that are on the plate here. Um, it's preliminary and we didn't wanna dig too far into the details because, you know, there's no commitment of funds. So we didn't wanna expend a lot of their, uh, you know, time right now, uh, unless I could get some consensus with the council moving forward.
Let me turn to Mr. Hawkins. And in a situation like this, I, the council typically would not give money and then say, here, figure out a way to spend it. And I know you've done more than that. So what would you recommend?
Just in terms of a direction from the council?
Mm-hmm.
I would never presume to suggest a direction for the council. What I could say is that.
I mean, your comfort level, we've got to program something. I mean, we can't just.
We're community services. We're prepared and we're poised to move forward in whatever the direction is. We've had preliminary discussions, not only with the councilman and, uh, the symphony, but also with the city manager's office.
Maybe I can clarify. I, I, I think the, um, you know, the community service district, they're prepared to, to deliver to the community, um, everything that you saw, plus a, a whole lot more that we don't have time to talk about, right?
We know that.
So, so we do concerts in the park, they're free. We do movies in the park, they're free. We do, we do a lot there. We do occasional, uh, partnerships as Mayor Pro-Tem Ron is, is discussing with the symphony, um, right out here on the steps of City Hall. I think what's being proposed is, can we, can we do more? And to do more with the symphony, um, require, they require, I think, a fee of, I wanna say ten thousand dollars per appearance, correct? And so what's being suggested is, um, can we partner, we the city, with the private development community on a cost-sharing basis to do more and deliver more of these type of cultural arts events, um, within the city limits? And whether that's two a year, three a year, four a year, um, you know, that, that's what we're talking about. Is that?
That, that's accurate. And I would also suggest that the ten thousand is probably a discounted rate that's being provided to the city.
So at this point, if we set aside those funds pending a plan or a schedule or something, um, I don't have a problem with that. But where, where, where will you get these, Mr. City Manager?
I'm gonna need to look into that. Um, you know, you, we, we have a balanced budget within the community services district. But again, if that's the will of the council, that this is a high priority, and I'm hearing twenty-five thousand dollars is what you're proposing, Mayor Pro-Tem?
Yeah. Well, really, I mean, it's fifteen thousand in addition to what we already provide.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Also, it's twenty-five thousand total, not an additional twenty-five?
Not an additional, just twenty-five thousand total matched with, you know, Bernie's, uh, pocketbook.
And that, and so if, if, if the partnerships work the way that we envision them working, this would get us four concerts, correct?
And some additional community programming, absolutely.
For more concerts? Um, again, city manager has to.
Well, you know, so, um, we can identify fifteen thousand dollars to, subject to the private development matching that. I would, I would prefer that we be allowed to go back and find that within the budget.
Yes.
Um, and when we bring forward the final document on June thirteenth, we will identify where that's going to come from and, and get the blessing of the full city council.
And you know, Matt, I, I love the idea of concerts, but concerts are, how many do we have scheduled with them right now? Do we know?
Think, uh, there's two.
Two right now?
Two events that they're going to actually be participating in.
I love the idea of concerts, but, you know, it's a one-time thing and when it's here, it's gone. I really would like to see something in the form of programs for, for kids.
Oh, yeah.
Because the school district struggles to fund those these days. You know, they, every, all the funding goes into academics because they have to teach to the test in order to get the funding. So, um, I would really like to see them put together some kind of a, a tangible program where they estimate how many kids might be involved and how they would do it. I know.
It sounds like, it sounds like we need to sit down with the symphony, uh, to get, obtain a formal proposal for this program above and beyond what community services district was planning to do. And then, um, you know, bring that back to the council, but, but have the ability to fund, uh, a public-private venture like, like it's being suggested.
Okay. With emphasis on public-private. All right. So let's take a look at that one.
And I'd be remiss if I did not mention, there, there are staff impacts to supporting special event, every special event. And we do many. So, you know, that's something that, that will fall on, uh, Mr. Hawkins and his team's shoulders. And I, I see Don and Damiac out there.
Right. Yeah. That's another reason I like the, the, the idea of programming, uh, workshops and getting guest conductors to come in. And, I mean, I grew up, I did that my whole academic life from about fifth grade on. And it's wonderful. Music's something you can take with you your entire life. Okay. So that's item number three.
Three. Number four.
You've reached your spending limit.
That's number, that was number eleven. Um, these, these are, the rest of these are, are, are sort of, uh, simple. The senior programming, I know we've, uh, just recently, uh, moved through the, uh, process for the senior master plan. Um, and, you know, I, I realize that we're a little premature in the dialogue of how those funds, um, you know, can sort of focus on, uh, the issues relevant to that. Um, but let's just make sure we keep that on our agenda moving forward for the future fiscal years.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and I know you've already, you know, discussed it for this current fiscal year. So, you know, uh, you know, just let's make sure we keep that on our radar.
I'm just checking that one off.
Yep. Uh, talking about leveraged investments again, um, there, no doubt that the, uh, I-15 branding and beautification, um, project is, is gonna be a, uh, you know, or could be a, uh, fantastic opportunity for the city and our transportation corridor. Um, and I said this at our, our meeting when we, uh, were presented this, uh, originally, and I'll say it one more time, is that, you know, I, I truly believe this is a great opportunity. Um, but, uh, it's, it's hard to explain to the public why we're investing millions of dollars in highway beautification while they're sitting stuck in traffic. Um, and so one of the things that I think we have a unique opportunity, and again, coming right back from DC, um, you know, transportation funding is on the front of everyone's mind. Um, and I think that, you know, our priority, our position in the priorities for, for Caltrans and the I-15 corridor is exceptionally low right now, according to them. Um, and given that this section of freeway is in the top, you know, ten busiest sections of freeway in the United States, uh, I think we need to reverse that, uh, thinking within Caltrans. And I believe that, you know, helping this could, that this highway beautification could actually significantly benefit the process moving forward and leveraging those funds, um, to make sure that, you know, our, our folks, our tourists, our residents are not just looking at a beautiful highway, but, you know, moving past it at a rate that's acceptable to everyone. Um, so whatever we can do, you know, moving forward.
You mean, you mean not too slowly?
Yeah, not too slowly, right? Uh, so, uh, whatever we can do moving forward and, and, and John and, and, and others, you know, looking at you guys, I, you know, let's definitely have the, the, the conversation. looking at you guys, I, you know, let's definitely have the, the, the conversation here and see what we can do to, to leverage this as much as possible and get our section of freeway a much higher priority for, for Caltrans.
Mayor Protem, if I could?
Sure.
Pat and his team have already gone up to Caltrans along with VTV folks and, and visited with Caltrans in an attempt to get the beautification project as well as the capacity issue moved up on the radar screen. We also have opportunities with our local partners down at Pochanga that we're going to try to work with them. We have a unique opportunity while we're getting ready to break ground on this interchange enhancement on the south end of town here to perhaps utilize that as a stepping stone to get this project, overall concept, beauty project kicked off. So, later on this summer, we're going to be working and meeting with our partners down at Pochanga to see if we can work with them and leverage that opportunity and get some cooperation on their part, because that actual interchange is the Pochanga-themed interchange, if you remember the concept plan.
Yes.
And we'll, we'll try to use that as a stepping stone to kick this project off, but I wanted to let you know that we've engaged Caltrans already and are starting to get that project in front of their eyes.
And they like the idea, right? They're already asking for plant species and all that kind of thing.
Yes, yes. So, our goal with the programming that we have in the CIP this year is to refine that, get refined estimates, and get us in a position so that if we do land any federal funding for capacity enhancements, we can include landscape enhancements in with a project like that.
Great.
Definitely.
If, if I could add just one more thing on that line, too.
Sure, Pat.
We're also in the process of scheduling a meeting with RCTC, who does the programming for the capacity-enhancing projects in order to try to get that fifteen corridor moved up in the, in the rankings, too, so...
Great. And I know, you know, anything we could do at the state or federal level with our lobbyists as well, you know, let's, let's make sure this is on everybody's radar and, and we, we move this thing forward quickly, because this is a very unique opportunity, and we definitely need to capitalize on it as much as possible.
I have a different thought about Temecula doing all of the freeway improvements that really are the responsibility of Caltrans. I think it makes them more lazy and not want to, you know, step up if they know that responsible cities are going to take those things over, but we really don't have a choice. I mean, we want the, we want the improvements to be done.
Yeah, we're looking at it as a two-pronged approach, you know, what we can do on our own, that we can control, and then also to bring it to the forefront of their minds so that when indeed they do have state funding available, this new SB one gas tax that's now come available, we have opportunities there, the state gets opportunities there with their shop programming, so we, we want to elevate the priority in their minds also.
So, they know we're a can-do city?
Yes.
And we can get it done? Okay, Matt, you're up to number six.
I know. So, you know, the good news is, we're actually on number eight now, because a lot of these issues we've already sort of talked about.
Okay.
So, I'm just moving through here. Streetlight acquisition program, we're talking about roughly if, you know, moving forward on that, eight hundred thousand dollars annual savings ultimately if we do the acquisition and conversion to LED lighting. Am I understanding that correctly?
A full, full-year savings, yeah, is estimated eight hundred K, and we've, I think we've already factored that into future out-years in our five-year planning, assuming, presuming the City Council will approve the acquisition, and then we'll be coming back probably, probably before December or somewhere around there, when, when the CPUC has weighed in on this. That's a, that's a, that's a big-ticket expense upfront for the city, but the ROI is seemingly there, and probably a good move for us. We'll probably be recommending that we move forward with that.
Did you say a four-year savings or a full-year savings?
A full year.
Full-year savings.
A full-year savings is eight hundred thousand, and, and again, that was already layered into five-year budget planning.
So, so one, one thing I'm just wondering is if you could take a look at a, a portion of those cost savings to be funneled back into additional programs for retrofitting or updating citywide systems and lighting and, you know, around City Hall efficiencies and so forth, and just sort of reinvesting in additional opportunities to save, save money.
We can look at that.
Okay.
Number nine.
Number nine's done. We talked about the inspection program. Oh, the last thing was, Aaron...
What number is this?
This is the last one, I promise.
Okay.
So, the, the, the last one was, Aaron, you had mentioned, you know, sort of a flat staffing model for, for city staff, and I know that, you know, during the recession, some tough decisions were made and, and, you know, positions were left vacant and so forth, but we're seeing, you know, a significant uptick in, in development and activity and, and this sort of desire for additional programs in community services and, and, you know, our, our city clerk's office, I'm just, because Randy, you're in my sights here, and, and Public Works, and, I mean, just across the board, you know, responsibilities are increasing, and that has trickle-down effects into human resources. I mean, you know, you know where I'm going with this, is that from a recruitment-retention and, and morale perspective, I realize the sensitivity of, you know, on the heels of Measure S, you know, hiring additional staff. However, you know, our, our staffing levels within the city are significantly lower than they were, you know, sort of post, or pre-recession, rather. And just from a efficiency standpoint, a development standpoint, a public works standpoint, you know, I, I, I recognize the sensitivity, but, and I appreciate you, you know, wanting to bring this back later, but, but definitely, let's have that, you know, tougher conversation sooner rather than later, because I think it's important that, you know, we recognize that folks have been, you know, we, we did this at the university years ago. They had this wonderful chart that showed how all of our research dollars and productivity and, and, you know, papers published and all of that were increasing as the number of faculty were decreasing. And at a pause during the meetings, one of our professors said, you know, if you could just get us to zero staff, we'd be infinitely productive. You know, I, you know, it just, it, it creates a, a significant burden on folks, and I, I really appreciate everybody really stepping up over the last several years to fill in those gaps and do the hard work, but, you know, eventually that, that breaks the back, and we need to strongly consider that.
No, I, I appreciate that comment, and I know the council will support, at least entertain consideration, and, and you're right, I didn't feel right coming to you, you know, seven months removed from, from Measure S and suggesting backfilling ten city positions and, and, but rather, we came forward with a work plan that's, that's very aggressive. It includes addressing the public safety, it includes addressing asset management, it includes addressing capital projects, and I'm not interested in breaking the backs of city employees, and, and they are working hard, they are, they have been working hard, we are lean, and I'm, I am interested in delivering on the work plan, and if I can't deliver on the work plan with the staff levels that we have, then by all means, I'm going to be coming to you and saying, we need help, we need more, we need support, and that, that support can come through various channels, and so I, I appreciate you saying that.
Okay.
And the council's always been supportive of City Manager and, you know, meeting with department heads and knowing, knowing what the needs are.
We, we've actually got a, next month, we've got a, a workforce development plan meeting with all the department heads to kind of look at this work plan as we now get it refined based on your direction and see what impacts that's going to have on each individual department's projections as far as workload and staffing level requirements go.
Great.
Actually, on, on that subject, we, we've asked every department head at this table to put together their ideal organization, and we're going to be discussing that. This is not just for tomorrow, but this is looking out the next five years. What is, what does our organization need to look like, and what are the impacts and the business decisions that we need to move towards? And succession planning is on all of our minds. This is not something new, we've been talking about it.
It's one of your requirements.
And we have a lot of folks that are long-term city employees that we're already seeing, you know, leave the organization with that institutional knowledge, and so the, the folks that are coming up behind them and the folks that are coming in, this is important, this is an important discussion, and we're all going to take it seriously.
All right. And that is all I have.
Oh, my goodness. All right, I got a whole page for you.
I heard a yay out of there.
I heard a yay. Stu, there's nothing left for you.
I'm good.
Are you good? Everybody's covered everything. The one thing I do want to address is the arts, cultural arts and the arts with Daniel. You know, we, the Arts Council served a very great purpose at one time, and I think Tom and I were, Tom, my husband was chairman for I don't know how many years, and so we were co-chairpersons, you know how that works. Tom volunteers to be the chairman, and then he says, yeah, Mary Ann can do that. So, we definitely need to try and get it going again, and I know we have over the years. It just takes a huge commitment on the part of the individuals who really want to take it and run with it. So, I definitely want to meet with Daniel to look at arts and culture and review our, the plans that we have, and it has been a long time since we've really looked at him. We've kind of let the arts, each individual segment of the arts community kind of take care of itself, and I think we can do a better job of trying to coordinate them a little bit better, and then he's talking a, a lot about venues, so we need to look at all the venues that we have, and we do have some really good venues. The one thing we don't have is a, is a city-owned museum, and I know that we've talked about this, and there are reasons that we haven't had a city-owned museum to this point, but let's do an inventory and see around town all the different performing arts venues. Of course, we've got fabulous ones at the high school, Temecula Valley High School's new Performing Arts Center is tremendous, and it does, you know, it seats more than our theater, and of course, our theater is wonderful also. So, let's schedule a meeting and we'll sit down, and then, I don't even know if we have a cultural arts subcommittee anymore.
I believe, I believe we do, I'll have to go back and look, but there's, there's definitely probably a closely resembling City Council Subcommittee that we can assign this to, and we're happy to set up the meeting with Mr. Foster and yourself.
Okay, that would be great. I think we've covered everything else. I love the idea of the, the enhanced freeway off-ramp, especially when we have a chance to do it from, you know, as we, as we build, and if we can take advantage of those federal dollars, that's just, that's really a no-brainer. I think we've talked about everything else. So, you are going to go back and start shuffling funds around and see what you come up with as far as...
Madam Mayor, we're, the Arts and Culture of Cultural Affairs Subcommittee is yourself and Councilmember Comichero. So, you, you win.
Yay! Well, that, you know, that kind of makes sense. So, okay, that's even better.
Can I clarify one, one other point, Madam Mayor? And then I'll, I'll be done, because several folks talked about the old-town parking and the garage, and so I think, you know, it's never been in the capital improvement program, and, and we're hearing what, what the community's saying, the downtown's saying, and what the City Council is, is suggesting, and we created the CIP sheet, that's really the first start in, in, in making a project real, and a million dollars is, is a considerable amount of seed money, and I, and at least from my perspective, what, what we hope to do with that is, one, is we, we have a lot of parking studies, as we're alluded to, so that's, I think we as a city need to decide where to go vertical on city-owned property. Is it at Sixth Street? Is it at the Stampede? So, that's probably the first decision in deciding what the capital improvement project should look like. So, that's probably the first decision that will come out of a, a, some semblance of a study and then a staff recommendation, so that, that we can fund that. Beyond that, that's sufficient funding to begin the engineering and design of said project at one of those locations, I would think. I think that will more than cover that. So, so we're going to get this ball rolling, you know, in the next, well, we can start in July one, and, you know, when, when the funds are available, and then thereafter, we can have these offline Subcommittee discussions about creative financing, EIFDs, but there, there's a number of different ways we can look at that, and, and that becomes a priority, then we'll, we'll figure it out. We'll figure out how to deliver on the construction side of things, whether it's the private community, whether it's the city, but I just wanted to put it out there to everyone that a million dollars, that's where it's going to go. It's going to go towards site selection and then engineering and design of the said project. So, if that's aligns with the vision, then, then I think we're good and we got our, our direction.
Well, we definitely know what's coming. I mean, we've got a beautiful hotel coming, we've got the two marketplace sites coming and, you know, everything else, so parking is going to become an issue, and we knew eventually it would, so, you know, as long as we have other things going up, we may as well get started on that one. I do have one more thing that I want to mention. Someone asked about Measure C and Measure S, so I don't want to, I don't want anybody to be confused, Measure C still continues, the assessment on each home still continues, but that, Measure C raises one-point-eight million dollars, and that's what it was for that fiscal year.
No, Measure, Measure C actually generates about three-point-five a year.
Well, I was looking at the pie chart, maybe I was only looking at the partial...
Because some of that is, only half of that is redirected.
Yeah, so partial, okay, so half of that's redirected, and so what, what we did really was, was, Community Services had, what we needed to backfill from the general fund, which was about five million dollars, now we're at six million dollars, and that's for all the programs that we see and love, parades and, you know, all that kind of stuff, parks, everything that Community Services does. Really, what it does is it substitutes Measure S funds for fun, you know, just from taking from the general fund for that part. He was, he wanted, there seemed to be some confusion about, well, where did Measure C go? We're still using Measure C for parks. Yes. So, Measure S will go to fund the...
Correct.
The encroachment of Community Services on the general fund.
Correct. Measure C and Measure S will, will help fund everything that you saw, everything that we're asked to deliver in the Park and Recreation Community Services District. That includes programming for seniors, special needs, teens, youth, special events, cultural arts, Park and Recreation, sports, aquatics. That, that budget will be funded, a small amount by Measure S, a small amount by Measure C, freeing up the general fund to do much of what we discussed, but also freeing up the general fund, I think that was the gentleman's question, to close the deficit gap that we had projected last year and the year before.
Exactly. So, that's where the money goes, back in the general fund to help us pay our obligations. Okay, I have nothing else on my list. Anything else? Going once, going twice? City Manager, anything?
I think I've said enough. Thank you.
All right. In that case, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. We've got a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and we stand adjourned. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, staff. Excellent job, as usual.